I'm going to call this meeting to order. If you'll please stand. I've asked Supervisor Gould for the invocation and then he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you and praise you today. Lord, we thank you for this great nation that you've given us and the great county that you've given us, Lord. Please give us the wisdom to manage it wisely in your eyes, Lord. We ask that you watch over our employees, Lord, that are out in the outer reaches of the county. Many of them have dangerous jobs and we just ask that they all come home safely to the loving arms of their family. Lord, protect our soldiers, sailors, airmen, marine, and guardians of space. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any items contained in the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-43103. Motion and action to call for an executive session to be held February 5th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m.
Still moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Do we have Supervisor Linganfelter and Johnson on the phone? Supervisor Johnson?
Here.
Supervisor Linganfelter?
Here.
Okay, great. Welcome. Thank you. Next up, official business, discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Mr. Esplun.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. Committee and/or legislative reports. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I attended the first LPC meeting of the season and, other than that, stayed pretty close to home.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Board, I filed a lawsuit against the Attorney General in her attempt to intimidate us on the hand count issue. But I'll also answer the question of whether the counties can do a hand count, since that is, it's not in statute. It's an assumption that people make. But really, I'm tired of the state government trying to influence the vote of the Board of Supervisors across the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Linganfelter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, I went down to Phoenix on my own dime, obviously because of the travel ban. There were oral arguments scheduled on the federal court hearing that Mojave County, La Paz County, Yuma County, and City of Yuma are involved with against the Greenstone to Queen Creek transfer. Oral arguments were held. Our attorneys gave their oral arguments. The Attorney General's office gave their oral arguments, and also the other side. Bureau of Reclamation gave their oral arguments. The judge in that case has committed to his ruling, issuing his ruling by the end of February. I'd also note that Mayor Nichols from City of Yuma, City of Yuma has committed to continue their funding should this have to go to an appeal. He's going to be working on Yuma County to get that same confirmation from Yuma, and sooner or later, we'll have to make that same choice for Mojave County. But we should receive that ruling by the end of February. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson?
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I, too, attended the LPC Legislative Policy Committee for CSA where they kind of tell us what's going on legislative-wise. There are over about 700 bills so far that have been put into the hopper. So far, I'm saying, so far. And some that have been brought to our attention have to do with tiny home constructions, requirements and exemptions. There is, there's a lot of talk about giving more power to local governments, about short-term rentals, Airbnbs, online lodging marketplace, et cetera. And then they're going to be talking, they want to do a continuing resolution to prohibit tax monitoring vehicle mileage. Again, this is just a few of them, and throughout the session, I will be bringing you things that I may or may not ask you to contact your legislators with that affect us. Also, the governor submitted her budget, and it ain't pretty. It hurts local governments. It's trying to claw back. I have this mental image of the governor, like clawing back monies that were given last year for our transportation issues, things like this. So, you know, you have one year where it's feast and then the next year where it's famine, and we're going to see how that goes. Again, if you want to know more, you can go to the azleg.gov page and find out more. But during the year, we will be keeping you posted. Okay. Do we have a lobbyist report?
Yes, we do.
All right. She'll be saying exactly what I just said.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, Nick Ponder on behalf of High Ground Public Affairs, thank you for the opportunity. Just wanted to update on water legislation. So, obviously Supervisor Angus, Chairwoman Angus, covered the budget and other bills. There are a substantial number of water bills that are out there this legislative session. I think if you talk to anybody at the Department of Water Resources and you listen to their testimony from last week on a few of the bills, a lot of those end up weakening in some way the Groundwater Management Act of 1980. We have not been direct, at this point in time, not been directed to take a position on any of those items. But it's really early on, and there've only been a few bills heard. In fact, one of them died in committee last week. So, we continue to work on our Mojave County groundwater legislation. I just met this morning with the lobbyists from the City of Kingman to work with them on the legislation in getting something that is acceptable to our sponsors to drop and to pursue that will be beneficial for the county and for City of Kingman, but also for the entire state of Arizona. It will be significantly or substantially different from the legislation that we ran last year with some modifications based on input from stakeholders, including the Farm Bureau and, and home builders, et cetera. I can also tell you that Senator Kerr will be running her own legislation. She's been meeting behind closed doors for the past two months with the Arizona Cattle Growers, Farm Bureau, as well as the Dairyman to find a bill that's acceptable to them. Other stakeholders, to my knowledge, have not been participatory in those conversations. And on my initial read of the bullet points of the language, because I have not seen the language, my impression is that it would not satisfy the needs of Mojave County and would actually give priority to water to some of the folks who got to the basin last and are using large amounts of water at the expense of municipal users. So, we'll keep an eye on that legislation. It has not been dropped yet, and once we see the language, we'll be able to do a full analysis of that. But we'll continue to pursue these items for the county. And I also have recently had multiple conversations with Jamie Kelly about, from Mojave County Water Authority, about legislation they might be pursuing at the benefit of Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City, the river communities that we'll keep an eye on and talk to the county about whether or not we want to weigh in on those items. Finally, there's one Yuma bill related to a study committee for, for water that would benefit, again, Lake Havasu City and Bullhead City river communities. Right now, the legislation only targets Yuma County. But I talked to the lobbyist for the City of Yuma last week, and they seem to be open to incorporating river, all river communities into that conversation and into that study committee. So, as more bills come along, I'll advise you all of those and get direction on what positions we need to take. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from Ponder? Supervisor Linganfelter?
Nothing, thank you.
Supervisor Johnson?
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have a county managers, I remember today, county managers' report?
Good morning, yes, Madam Chair and board members. A couple of items, as you noted and as the board members know, the governor released her recommended FY 2025 state budget. And the Joint Legislative Budget Committee, the JLPC, released the JLPC baseline as well, both last week. We're reviewing and monitoring both budgets and the touchpoints of those budget and any impact to Mojave County. We are also working with CSA to analyze and determine what all the impacts are related to those. Our primary concerns are really related to any budget increases and cost shifts to counties such as long-term care, as well as, as you noted, any reference to clawback funds allocated for projects that are already underway, at least here in Mojave County. So, we will, we will stay on those. We will monitor very closely and keep the board updated and informed. One other item, and briefly, related to the Public Land Commission, and this is just a friendly reminder, the commission has 11 members, one board member and 10 appointed, five, one from each district, and five subject matter experts. To date, we have two board members, two appointed commissions members as the board appointed in previous board meetings. So, this is just a friendly reminder that in order to stand up this commission and have quorum, we need more appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question about that. So, if three out of the five supervisors choose not to appoint anybody, can then they be appointed by the supervisors who wish to, to participate in it? Or what happens? Because I don't want to just leave the people who have stepped up and said that they would participate. I don't want to leave them hanging.
Well, let me, I want to take--
Just jump in real quick. This isn't an agendized item, so I'd rather not get into a lengthy discussion about it. So, it's not agendized, so let's--
Okay.
Stick to the agenda. But I'd be happy to answer the question afterwards, absolutely. I just--
Okay. Thank you.
Let it do that with agenda.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Manager Elters, did you have the numbers of the governor's budget and the JLBC baseline budget?
We have, yes, we have the numbers, and we've been working with CSA. We got a list of the specific areas where the, at least in the governor's budget, is looking to claw back some of those state funds that were allocated in FY '24, Supervisor. So, I'll be happy to share with you the information that we do have to date.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We just received an email from County Supervisors Association from Vanessa. She gives an outline of the governor's budget, breakdown of the numbers.
Okay. Onto call to public. This is what it says in the call to public statute. "The public body may make an open call to the public during a public meeting subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of the public body. At the conclusion of an open call to public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticisms made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the public body shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action." Okay. First up, Charles DeShazer, and then Armin Stang.
Good morning. My name's Chuck DeShazer. I'm from Topock, Arizona, and what I'm here to discuss this morning is, yes, I am a frequent flyer, according to Hildy, and I can't come to a meeting without opening my big mouth. I would ask that this board, in the future, take up the idea of creating an oversight committee for planning and zoning. I hate even asking for more government, because I hate more government, but they seem to be creating their own little dictatorship, fascist state, whatever you want to call it over there, because they're not being asked for things such as how many chickens and roosters you can have, which could create such a rooster stud service in this county, even though we beat the state to the punch on that one. We're probably the only county that regulates chickens, roosters, and peacocks. So, I'll keep it short today, and thank you very much.
Armin Stang, so when I call your name, please get ready to come down. You have a lot of people signed up. Next up is Chris Rodardi. Oh, it'd be nice if I put it on. Okay. All right, so we have Armin Stang, and then next up is Chris Rodardi.
Armin Stang of Fort Mojave. In regards of Mojave Electric, the building and zoning department did not pay attention to the property zoning that was zoned for a rock-crushing plant, not for a power plant. So, as far as I'm concerned, the plant uses way too much water, the water we don't have. The plant, according to the internet, uses 8,500 gallons of water to produce 1 megawatt of power. Where does the water go? Most likely up in steam, and then they need to cool the turbines. That water is wastewater, cannot be put back in the ground. So, I really would appreciate if the board brings that matter back to the agenda and that refers back to the original zoning, so they have to go through all the steps, not just take the shortcut. Then the building department did not pay attention to anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Dumas. Oh, I had Chris Rodardi, and then Christina Dumas next up.
Chris Rodardi, Mojave County taxpayer. "The obedient always think of themselves as virtuous rather than cowardly. I thought I'd opened my first call to the public in 2024 by quoting the late and great George Carlin. He was right, you know? It takes real courage to stand up to bullies. As I've said before, Mojave County's nay vote on the hand count of ballots was a prime example of cowardice in the face of tyranny. All it took was a strongly worded letter from the Attorney General, delivered the day of the crucial vote, and, well, the rest is history. Following my comments of December 4th, in which I expressed my opinion as to why the vote went as it did, Mr. Gould was caught on a hot mic mumbling, 'Learn who your friends are, Chris.'" At the time, I was a little baffled. What was that all about? What did he mean? Who are these supposed friends? Then, just yesterday, I read that Supervisor Gould has filed a court proceeding to bar Chris Mays's bullying tactics against pushing for a hand count of elections. Mr. Gould has done his homework and asserts nothing in state law prevents a county from counting votes by hand. He's taking action, it would seem, stepping up for we the people. So, in spite of our differences, in this case, he may in fact be one of those friends he alluded to. At any rate, I wish him all the best in this endeavor. And in a gesture of good faith and goodwill for the beginning of 2024, I want to sincerely express my gratitude and say thank you, Supervisor Gould."
Okay? Christina Dumas, and then afterwards Jeff Esposito.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors and Staff. I'm Dr. Chris Dumas from Bullhead City. I want to address a letter that I sent to the Mojave Daily Newspaper. They had included me in a December 5th article without talking to me about anything, and so I responded, and they didn't even publish it. They did get it. So, this is the letter. "Let's discuss that baseless injunction and the malfeasance of the Mojave County Republican Committee, particularly Chairwoman Jeanne Kench, especially as it pertains to the Bullhead City GOP office. I welcome a discussion with a journalist where I can provide my proof. Kench hears rumors and then acts upon them without checking facts. She called screaming at our director, Kerry Azel, telling him to keep his PCs in line and other unprofessional calls. There are instances in which Kench did not adhere to MCRCC's bylaws. I wrote a censor to hold our representatives, including Gillette Biasinci, accountable, but was ignored at the July 8th meeting against Robert's rules and even omitted from the minutes. Other omissions exist, too. James Barber taped it. On July 27th, I was served with a baseless injunction for workplace harassment. Kench lied on the injunction, then tried unsuccessfully to entrap me. She was represented by Phoenix attorney Timothy Lasota, who had 23 years litigation experience. I defended myself. Kench lied to the GOP to get a continuance stating she was out of town when we were to have a meeting, a hearing on August 21st, when she was trying to oust us, two PCs, Misty and myself, by manipulating an Arizona statute, ARS 38-291, using bad behavior and moral perpetuity. The witnesses she used proved my case, and it was dismissed. With the exception of Ashley Garrick and Valerie Medina, Chairwoman Kench, the MCRCC Executive Board, and our two Mojave County representatives, Gillette and Biasinci, have debased our Republican Party and our committee. They must resign." In addition to that, I wanted to bring up a point that happened this Saturday at the MRC meeting. They did a hand count. They did about 2,000, 20, no, 2,200 ballots. They counted them by hand, a little bit over an hour. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Jeff Esposito, and after Jeff, it's Jennifer Esposito.
Learn to walk again after a broken ankle.
Well, at least you're walking.
Ms. Esposito from Mojave County. Let me put that right there, all right? Okay. All right, "The Great Reset Initiative is an economic recovery plan drawn up by the World Economic Forum, founded by Klaus Schwab, the CEO and Dr. Evil look-alike. This was supposedly in response to the COVID plandemic, which had a start date in 2020. Components of the Great Reset would create conditions for a stakeholder economy in a more equitable and sustainable way utilizing ESG, environmental, social, and governance metrics, and harnessing the innovations of the Fourth Industrial Revolution. In May 2020, WEF stated that COVID offered a great opportunity to reshape and reset the world in a way that is more aligned with the United Nations 2030 Sustainable Development Goals. WEF works with the UN and the WHO, not the band. WEF met in Davos this month with an impressively demonic agenda, which is not surprising considering there is a large statue close by, lovingly called the Baby Eater. Meanwhile, WHO has been busy in its efforts of world domination. In May, an amendment to the International Health Regulations, Articles 1, 13A, 42 and 43, will suspend the sovereignty of 197 countries, giving them total control of procedures, people, and plans when they pull the trigger on their next plandemic, most likely this summer by the election. Disease X, anybody? Hopefully, Hildy will push back against them unlike Fraulein Wilma. Sadly, we may be in worse shape considering her Agenda Item 28 today. In that same document is Article 18, which includes but is not limited to such niceties as mandatory vaccinations, isolations, medical treatments, and other wonderful restrictions. The media whores are spewing out their pre-plandemic propaganda," that's hard to say, too many Ps, "as we speak. You five need to control the county health department completely. No personnel should travel anywhere or receive any training originating from any of this one-world machine madness. The county should send a letter to these organizations shouting that we will not comply." And I hope one of you will do that, or two, or three, or four, or five.
Thank you. Jennifer Esposito, and then up is Don Martin.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito, candidate for District 4 County Supervisor. "My husband always surprises me. We never discuss what we're going to say ahead of time, so this is always interesting and fun. I hope you're hanging on to your seats. I'd hate to have you fall out of your chair. But today, I have a compliment for County Supervisor Jean Bishop. At the last meeting, she allocated ARPA funds to go to the Beale Street Theater. Now, a couple of years ago, I played Glinda the Good Witch in the Beale Street Theater musical production, did a little song, little dance, you know? It was a lot of fun. It was a wonderful opportunity for the community and to expose the community, and especially our youth, to the arts, which is something that is often sorely lacking. And so, I think that that was a wonderful thing to do. Additionally, regarding the ARPA money, we approved, or you approved, at the last meeting, the contract for the bid for the Golden Valley Improvement District well, which came in at under $1 million, which, again, shows that I was 100% right and staff was 100% wrong, and that it was not going to be a $3.1 million project requiring an illegal slush fund. Now, the point that I would like to make is that on December 5th, 2022, when a little over $700,000 something was allocated to the project in the original ARPA money, there was $562,900 swept from previously allocated funds for the project. Currently, with the amount of money that was added to that pot since then, we sit at $1.7 million in ARPA money, plus the $562,900 of previously allocated GVID money. I urge you to put it on the next agenda, to give us back our nearly $600,000 worth of GVID money since the bid came in at less than $1 million, and you have $1.7 million allocated. There's obviously more than enough in ARPA money to complete the project, including the materials, the inspections, the permits, the whole ball of wax. So, you're essentially holding a lot of GVID money hostage. I mean, I don't think it's in a separate account, but it is definitely on a separate ledger. We can be pretty sure of that. And so, please restore our funds and make us flush like I always knew that we were. Additionally, when we come in under the $1.7 million in ARPA funds, since money has already been allocated to Beale Street Theater, I would like to see any unspent funds from GVID go to help Beale Street Theater complete their downtown project, because I think it's a very worthy thing to do. Thank you."
Thank you. All right, Don Martin, and then Greg Beffert. And then after him, Steve Robinson.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Staff. My name is Don Martin. I live in Kingman. I recently read in the Arizona Capital Times about a story, Supervisor Ron Gould and his attempt to get a hearing on the validity of the hand count of votes after the letter to the board that the board had received from Attorney General Chris Mays. In that article, Mr. Gould says he is doing this because that if it had not been for the Mays letter, Lincoln Felter would have voted for the hand count, providing the necessary third vote, given his earlier vote against it. He then goes on to say, quote, "It seems rather odd that he would change his mind to bring it back if he had not changed his mind. Everyone in the free world knows why then Chairman Lincoln Felter brought it back. It was due to the strong-armed tactics of Senator Sonny Morelli, who thought he had convinced Lincoln Felter to change his vote. And when Travis didn't do that, as was expected, there was immediate backlash, name-calling, and threats." Mr. Gould said, and I quote, "My concerns is that my constituents are losing faith in the election process. Sir, I think it's not your constituents and others that are losing faith in the voting process, because there has not been shown to be any problem in Mojave County. The problem is that elected officials aren't being honest and forthright on why they keep grinding away at this issue, what has been voted down twice by this current board." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Beffert, and then-- Mr. Biffert, and then Mr. Robinson.
Supervisors, for the record, my name is Greg Biffert. Mojave County taxpayer. I'm not part of a Jerry Springer show. I've been consistent in my message since 2020 at the local government level about your overreaction, or your over-response to COVID-19. Your violation's a natural law, your violation's a statutory and constitutional law. I've been consistent in my message the whole time. I filed criminal complaints, I filed civil complaints with the U.S. Justice Department, I filed complaints with the AG's office over open meeting violations. My message has been consistent. What has changed is, and I'm not angry, I'm passionate, but what has changed is the fact that now you're in a position where you're running for a higher office, a seat of power that you happen to crave and talk about. That's the only thing that has changed when it comes to the people here that are coming up here to address you. They've awakened to the lies and the deception. Let me talk about natural law for a minute. I teach natural law. Call it God's law, call it, it's universal, it's objective moral law is what it is. It's not a religion, it's a science. It's universal. It's a universal set of, which means it applies in all places at all times. It's non-man-made, it's immutable, which means it can't be changed at the whims of It governs the consequences of the behavior of human beings, the people that have the, should have the potential to understand the difference between right and wrong, which I'll explain in a future session here. And you violated natural law, and you caused harm. You caused harm to the citizens of this community, and you're still causing harm. So Supervisor Gould, I recommend you take Item 7 off the consent agenda, and let's get this on the table and talk about it. Okay? Let's talk about the resolutions that I sent you. Okay? So the two law enforcement professionals were instrumental in violating natural law. You caused harm, and you're still causing harm to this community. You pushed to have the attorneys file civil complaints and criminal complaints against businesses that didn't comply, that didn't shut down. You pushed for that. No, you had, you had full knowledge, there's a difference between ignorance and nessence. Nessence is an infant who doesn't know anybody because they don't know. They simply don't know, they've never been taught. Ignorance is ignoring the truth and embracing the lie. As law enforcement professionals, you knew the truth about the law, and you ignored it for money or for your own political agenda. And you tried to silence us. I recommend that you don't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson.
I'm Stephen Robinson from Golden Valley. Chairman Angus, board members, staff. I'm wearing a hat when I normally wouldn't, because I'm really excited about what happened yesterday in the election. What makes it more impressive is the fact that the power of government and the Republican Party had been unleashed against President Trump, trying to destroy him with legal campaigning, or legal issues and false accusations. And it's just disgusting that that's happened at the national level, and we have a big swamp there. We live here in Mojave County, the reddest county in the nation, I can say with pride. In fact, I used to say the best thing about Mojave County is it's a one-party county. Unfortunately, we have our own swamp here in Mojave County, both in the Republican Party and in the county. I'm going to give two, I won't go into the details about the Republican Party, but I, well, I will, because one of them was about here. But back the two predecessors to the current county manager, one was getting background reports, illegal background reports on private citizens that he considered a political enemy, and the other one was firing people for political reasons that they were running for office and they were a county employee. On top of that, in 2011, a gentleman wore a shirt that said "F the Tax." Now, I won't repeat it exactly, and I think it was in poor taste, but the Supreme Court had ruled that that was protected speech, yet this county prosecuted Mervyn Fried, and I think that was totally off-the-charts wrong. Then, last August, the county assessor and Republican Party Chair came here and tried to get you to illegally remove two or three people from the PC status, misquoting the law. Thankfully, to your credit, you said, "No, we're not going to do that." And I am frustrated that I've seen, I mean, I have dozens of examples of, in fact, where one of the supervisors, not supervisors, but one of the county managers was spying on me, having someone watch me and report what I was saying on Facebook or in private emails. But the last, you know, your job as supervisors, well, I'll get into that when we speak about the county election, but I will say this, even though she's not, well, here, she's back. Last July, Supervisor Bishop responded to people speaking to her about that $5 surcharge, and she brought it back up that it would be taken off, and I thank you for that, Supervisor Bishop.
Okay. All right. I believe the next group are the people to speak about the issue in Fort Mojave, and so, again, ask you to consolidate if you can. I know you all travel long distance, if you agree with the person in front of you, and I'll just leave it at that. So first up is Gerald Meyer. After Gerald is Bob Hooker.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and the Board of Supervisors. My name is Gerald Meyer. I've lived in Fort Mojave for 22 years. I am opposed to the present location of the gas-fired power plant. In doing so, I went to the ad that has been in the local paper every day for the last week by Mojave Electric. And all the statements in that ad are feel-good statements. They aren't definitive enough. I chose to research the perimeter buffer zone of a quarter to one-half mile. I live a quarter mile from the proposed location. In fact, I would have an unobstructed view of the power plant from my dining, living room window. When I went to research it, I found this document on my computer that lists every power station in Arizona. Nuclear, you name it, everything. I went to natural gas-powered plants, there are 22 in Arizona. Seven of those are simple, 11 are combined, and four are steam. The, the actual amount would, Mojave Electric has not been truthful and transparent with the reasons for the location. A simple, there are only seven simple power plants, and they are very inefficient. They are only 35% efficient. The combined power plants are as high as 80% to 85% efficient. The information that I've seen is disturbing in the fact that they have not been transparent to Planning and Zoning Commission and to the Board of Supervisors. There are so many different proposals or amounts about power plants. I would like to propose a motion to the Board of Supervisors that they rescind the extension that was granted on December 4th until more transparent information is disclosed by Mojave Electric. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Hooker? And then Terry Wolf? And after Terry Wolf, it's Deborah McKeever.
My name is Bob Hooker. I live on South Vanderslice in Fort Mojave. Good morning. You know all the health and safety risks from a gas-fired Pekar plant that have been presented time and time again. I don't know if these are being ignored, or there are personal agendas keeping you from making an intelligent, ethical, and legal decision. So in case you don't know, have forgotten, or are just ignoring it, let me cite for you from the county website, the purpose of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Quote, "Purpose: The requirement for a planning and zoning commission is contained in State Statute, Arizona Revised Statute 11-802, as are the commission's duties. The commission's primary duty is to advise the Board of Supervisors in managing the orderly growth and physical development of Mojave County, and to protect the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of its citizens. The commission will make changes to further the public interest, but will not alter plans or review regulations solely for any individual, group, or organization for their personal caprice, convenience, or profit," end quote. Seems pretty straightforward to me. So what happened to get us to this point? During the December 4th meeting, there was a lengthy discussion between the supervisors and Tim Walsh of Planning and Zoning regarding BOs Resolution Number 2023-223, but there seemed to be a lot of confusion and talking in circles. The only thing that was clear was that Planning and Zoning failed to follow procedures in a timely fashion three years ago to revert the parcel back to residential status. So number one, Planning and Zoning shouldn't have allowed the application by MEC to go to the Board of Supervisors at all. If Planning and Zoning had pulled the records when they initially received the request, as they should have, they would have realized this was a huge problem because the processes and procedures were not followed correctly and in a timely manner. They should have processed the original zoning change and brought all paperwork up to date. Then MEC would have been advised that due to a process error, the property legally had to go back to residential status, and MEC would have to start all over with the zoning process. So number two, being that the whole mess got to the Board of Supervisors, and it was totally unclear as to the proper procedures, there shouldn't have been a motion to vote on the resolution. An executive session should have been called immediately to have further discussion with the attorney and Tim Walsh, because by this time, it became a legal issue for everyone involved. If they didn't want to call an executive session, the board could have called for a continuance and not accepted any motions to move forward with a vote. Planning and Zoning could have then gone back, rectified the situation, and notified MEC they'd have to start all over with the zoning process. So what do we do now? The only way to resolve this problem now is for Planning and Zoning to submit a rescission of their previous recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for approval of the resolution. This would in turn rescind the Board of Supervisors' decision to grant approval. This is all predicated on the admission of Planning and Zoning that procedure was not followed three years prior, and the parcel must be returned immediately to residential status. Thank you.
Terry Wolf, and then Deborah McKeever. After Ms. McKeever, Carol Hooker.
Good morning, Chairman Hildy and Board of Supervisors. My name is Terry Wolf. I live at 2603 Alterna Drive in Fort Mojave. I am very much opposed to this gas power plant. I go out every morning and look out my patio and can't believe what I would see if you guys don't put this back on the agenda for more discussion and vote. It's, I'm not going to make this long, drawn-out speech, because you've heard it all, but I'm sure if it was going in your backyard, you wouldn't want it either. We're not opposed to the power plant, per se. It's the location. It needs to go somewhere else. And please, please, think about this and what it could do to our community. Thank you.
Okay. Deborah McKeever. Carol Hooker, and then Wallace Florin.
I hope I got that right. Good morning, Madam Chairman and the rest of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Deborah McKeever, and I've been a resident of Mojave County for 10 years. I'm appalled at the underhanded way that MEC filed for the Planning and Zoning notice to remove the condition that is for a mineral reclamation plant enclosed in building only, and to allow an extension of time for the completion of improvements to allow for an energy facility in the Fort Mojave vicinity. This request was specifically for the 15 acres on parcel 22135024 in Fort Mojave. The notice only read "energy facility," as well as the sign posted, which blew away in the wind before anyone could actually read it, but thanks to modern technology, there's a picture provided online. How do you legally go from removing the condition for a mineral reclamation facility to a power plant without a public hearing? I believe the way that it was presented to the Board of Supervisors seemed kind of pre-orchestrated and presented around the holidays in hopes nobody would pay attention, and MEC could start building it without any pushback. After listening to the meeting on the 12/4/2023 several times, it was as if it had been rehearsed, asking MEC about their efforts to continue to find a better location, which evidently is in the same parcel, just not in the 15 acres that is zoned for heavy manufacturing. I believe that it was MEC's plan all along to want to put it a little further north on the same property, but didn't want to go through the public hearing process. Well, that is still not far enough away. Jean Bishop has advocated for downwinders in this county, but wants to bring a gas-fired power plant into our valley, which will bring more health problems to our area. My family goes back generations in Arizona, many, or should I say, most, that lived in Arizona all their lives have passed from cancer due to downwinders and from the mining in Arizona. This Pekar plant is just another form of pollution. Granted, we need the power, but we need to make it safe. Travis Lincoln Felter voted for the moratorium for renewable energy in Mojave County. I understand his concern for the water. Some energy companies might use, and it is a valuable resource in our state. However, there was nothing keeping the Board of Supervisors from putting conditions on the zoning on those properties to restrict water use for solar, just as the 15 acres had conditions for indoor rock-crushing facility. Not letting more solar into our area paved the way for MEC to put this power plant into our neighborhood. Travis Lincoln Felter posted on social media a poster that reads, "Think 20 years ahead, work backwards." Great advice. You should follow it. Board of Supervisors should rescind this decision on the 15-acre parcel and make it go back to the Planning and Zoning for the proper protocol.
Thank you very much. Who are we up to? Carol Hooker was?
I am going to totally agree with Deb. I think she did a fabulous job, and she speaks for all of us.
Okay. Thank you very much. Wallace Florins, then Mac McKeever, and Jerry Grinstead.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and Chairman Angus. My name is Wallace Florin. I live at 2603 East Alterna Drive. I can just about throw a rock at the property. If you folks have come out there and visited it, you had to drive right by my backyard. I am on, I'm having difficulty trying to figure out how everything got to this point, but I can only assume, in the proper meaning of the word, there's a lot of ignorance in the first voting to get this situation to where it's at. You've all had an opportunity now to listen to all of the things, and all of the grievances, the health grievances, and the property grievances, to understand that there is a problem with this issue. Because of that problem, I would hope to appeal to your better senses and reopen this whole discussion, because I know, looking at you, I can understand that you are very, very high in the community. You've done well in your life. Most of us have, too. And what you're doing is subjecting us... And what you're doing is subjecting us to a ghetto. I came from Montana, and I'll tell you this, I would have never spent all this time and effort and money to live in a very beautiful place that I am living if this plant had have been put where it's at today, where this plant to be put. And I would imagine that most of my neighbors would not have been there either. So I want you to come to your better way of thinking about this, and I don't know if it'll work, but please do something to stop it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[649.66][649.66](APPLAUSE). Mr. McKeever, and then Jerry Grinstead, and then John Martinez.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Mac McKeever. I live on Shelby Road in Fort Mojave in the Valley View area. Been in that house for about seven years now, but I've been a resident of Mojave Valley for a little over 11. I want to thank Chairman Angus and Supervisor Gruhl for coming out and visiting the property with me on last Thursday on the 11th. You were able to see and experience the exact location of where the property is at, and I think that was very important, because we met at my house that day, and we drove from my house out to the property. Took us about a minute to drive out to the corner of the property. I know that Tyler Carlson, the MEC from...our MEC CEO, got out of the truck right then and stated that I wasn't in the right place, that the location was farther down the property from that. Well, the property's 15 acres. Diagonally across, it's about 1,000 feet. So we were, instead of 1,200 feet to the corner of the property, we were about another 600 feet. We needed to move onto the property. It's where they proposed the location of the plant was going to be. But I don't have a site map or an approved plan or any permits, so all I can say is it's someplace on that property. You know, I know they're saying it's farther in, but still, it's only about 2,000 feet from the nearest houses. The wind was blowing pretty good that day. It was pretty cold out there, and I appreciate you coming out on that day. You got to see just how hard the wind blows off of that property directly at the houses on Valley View on a winter day. So it's, you know, 30 miles an hour, and the pollutants that are being released from that plant and the noise are going to be surrounded in our backyard. I feel both Planning and Zoning and the Board of Supervisors have failed in their obligations to protect the residents of the community from hideous acts of big business and feel they can do whatever they want in discriminating against minorities, lower income, and senior communities. Most of the people in that community are over 64 years old, which we fall into a minority of senior citizens. It's time the Board of Supervisors rescinded their approval of this zoning extension and corrected this unjust act against our community. Supervisor Gruhl, I want to thank you again for attending our community meeting at the fire station Thursday night. There you saw over 100 concerned citizens there discussing both the dust problem that occurs in our neighborhood and in our area and the, you know, possibility of a peaker plant being built in that location. Our community has enough problems, just from the natural occurring elements of the dust and wind and stuff, to add another problem that's going to cause, you know, health problems, reduction of property values, and then emotional well-being of the citizens in that area. I feel MEC misrepresented their intentions to Planning and Zoning, because as my wife said, the application stated "energy facility," and never on any of their written notices to Planning and Zoning said anything about a peaker plant. So I just ask that you do the right thing and rescind your Board of Supervisors' resolution to extend this. Thank you.[854.49][854.49](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Jerry Grinstead, John Martinez, Sherry Grinstead.
My name is Jerry Grinstead, and I reside at 2613 East Nesburst Road in Fort Mojave. We have a peaker problem and a smoke-and-mirrors problem here. I'm opposed to the location of the proposed Fort Mojave Natural Gas Twin-Turbin Peaker Plant. By not following the correct zoning procedure three years prior, our neighborhood has ended up in a life-changing event. The type of shade-tree zoning by the Planning and Commission and a board approval on December 4th changed Resolution 2018-041's intention. I'm sure it was not the intention of the board in 2018 to have a power plant put on that property. Further misleading is Mojave Electric's cooperative's word "energy facility." This was worded to hide what was really being proposed. It is a natural-gas-fired, twin-turbin peaker power plant. A peaker power plant that produces dirty energy for big money in exchange for damaged health, pulmonary and heart issues in adults, asthma and reproductive and other health issues in children, along with the emotional well-being and loss of property values of Fort Mojave community. Madam Chair, on your website for running for higher elective office, it says you have worked to overturn policies and laws which are harmful to Mojave County and rural Arizona, yet you voted for this terrible and unjust amendment. How do we trust you when you move on? Supervisor Linkenfelter, on September 19, 2023, on social media, you showed a slide that says, "Think 20 years ahead, work backwards," with a statement especially on issues that will affect all future generations of a community. Yet you voted for this terrible unjust amendment, and future generations of Fort Mojave are going to have to live with it. Supervisor Bishop, I applaud your efforts in Law Enforcement and Radiation Exposure Compensation Act, and our hearts break at how your family and so many other downwinders have suffered from what the government puts in the air. You should know better than anybody. The documentation is there, and yet you voted for this terrible and unjust amendment. Simply put, the dirty air created by a twin-turbin gas-fired peaker plant in Fort Mojave is being built to make big money for MEC, for its members. Can I see a show of hands? How many of you are members of the Mojave Electric Cooperative?[1060.24][1060.24](APPLAUSE).
My name is John Martinez. I live in Fort Mojave. Obviously, I'm in opposition to the proposed location of the Fort Mojave Natural Gas Fired Power Plant. One of my complaints about this peaker plant project is the lack of transparency on the part of MEC. They expedited this project to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Supervisors without any community inclusion. To muddy the waters even more, MEC brought 23 paid employees to speak in favor of the peaker plant. Not one speaker, not one, while on duty acknowledged that they were representing MEC. Residents of the Fort Mojave community spoke as well, but four members of this board chose to side with big business, not the citizens of the affected area. This whole process reeks of incompetence. At the December 4th, 2023 meeting, Director Walsh attributed this oversight, end quotes, to the workload. He also stated that there are not many properties within the 300 feet of this proposed site. This board accepted this excuse of incompetence on the part of the Development Services Director. Instead of understanding this level of incompetence and investigating further, four supervisors chose to approve MEC's request. Again, I stayed big business over community. My main complaint is this: It's unethical in which MEC has moved on this project. I am an MEC customer. I've dealt with this company on a very personal level. On September 4th, during that heavy windstorm, a wooden power pole fell over...fell and crashed through my block wall. The top of the pole sat within five feet above my pool. I contacted MEC to file a claim for damages so I could rebuild my block wall. After several phone calls and emails, MEC's final response was that their insurance company found that MEC was not negligent. Okay? Not negligent. Not trying to do the right thing, but hey, we're not negligent, so move on. No damages would be awarded. MEC advised me to file a claim with my homeowner's insurance company. MEC did not send a check, did not apologize, did not even attempt to contract their own company to repair my wall. I hired a local block wall construction company and was quoted a price of $1,575 for the repair. I paid out of pocket and eventually filed a claim with my homeowner's insurance company. The workers repaired the wall and asked if they should clean up the broken bricks and splintered wood. I told them to leave it. MEC should clean it up. After about two months after the windstorm, MEC contracted a company to remove all the debris from Van Der Slice. Of course, they left all the broken bricks. Needless to say, I'm opposed to this project.[1263.71][1263.71](APPLAUSE).
I want you to hear me breathing while you're talking. Okay, Sherry Grinstead, and then Don Matson and Doug Thornton.
My name is Sherry Grinstead, and I reside at 2613 East Nesburst Road in Fort Mojave. I am opposed to the location of the proposed Fort Mojave Peaker Plant. It's an abomination that I even have to be here, but since proper zoning procedure three years ago was not followed, I am here. You awakened a group of retired people in Sunrise Hills that I call David. Along with us, we have awakened people in 17 subdivisions, nine schools, and churches. You can change the call to the public to midnight, Madam Chair, but it will not change our resolve. David will prevail and Goliath will not. I have a question for each of you. Should a wife and grandmother that is 72 years old with seven children, 15 grandchildren, waiting for our first great-granddaughter to arrive, need to fight a Board of Supervisors that made an error and will not correct it? No, we really should be enjoying our families and enjoying gatherings with neighbors. Now we are looking at a natural-gas-fired, twin-turbine peaker power plant because the Planning Commission, MEC, and this board tried to hide that it's a dirty peaker plant. Shame on the four of you for the negligence in not correcting this unjust and terrible vote, putting our neighborhood and the rest of Fort Mojave at risk because it is cheaper for MEC is so wrong. Perhaps Tyler Carlson should spend some of his $1,237,934 of cooperative annual income to help move this plant out of the EPA Suggested Danger Zone. Mojave County has a big, beautiful landfill with lots of land. Move it over there. Oh, but money in MEC's pocket and members appears to be more important to the four of you? What about the health of Fort Mojave? The real shortage we have in this county is not gas, electricity, or water. It's common sense, leadership, and courage. As Martin Luther King said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at a time of challenge and controversy." Thank you.[1439.32][1439.32](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much. Don Matson, Doug Thornton, and then Paula Franks.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Don Matson. I live in Fort Mojave. A lot of the things we've already discussed have already been spoken, but I take my dogs for a walk pretty much every day. I wander over on Shelby Street, which is near a street to where this plant is proposed to be built, and I realize that much of the discussion so far has been distanced to existing homes. There's also another tract of homes to be built there, which are lots at this point, which are going to be even closer than the current houses that everybody's discussing, whether it's 1,300 feet or 2,000 feet, whatever the number may be. There are some people who are gonna...may have already purchased those lots, may be building homes there now, live in another state, planning to retire to beautiful Fort Mojave, and they're going to be surprised when they come to see their new house right next door to a power plant. So that doesn't seem right, that you would adjust the permitting process and changing the zoning for that. As part of the zoning issue, zoning is law, and we have the full force of government to enforce zoning. When the law says it expires at a particular time, it expired, and therefore, it reverts back to residential. So a request to take out some words about what kind of plant can be built in a heavy manufacturing area has no relevance in a residential area that's already reverted back. So I don't understand how you can decide that you would allow the MECC request for removing the recycling facility in a manufacturing area when the area really wasn't manufacturing. It was residential at the time you made that decision. And it's not right. You should reconsider your decision and put it up for a public discussion again. Thank you.
Thank you.[1619.82][1619.82](APPLAUSE). Doug Thornton, Paula Franks, and the last one's Dottie Norman.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Doug Thornton, and I live in Mesquite Creek in Mojave Valley, and I've been in this community a little more than two years. One of the main things that we know and you've all heard about is the pollution from these plants. It's a source of toxic gases like ammonias, formaldehyde, nitric oxides. And the thing on this one, I've been researching and looking at it. One thing I came across is that California wants to phase out this type of plant by 2026 because of the pollution that it causes. So is California on to something that maybe we're not on to? Okay? And also is MEC selling electricity to California and other states? Okay? Because if California stopped there, they guys turn around and buy that from us. I don't know. Okay? The thing on the three-mile radius, which you hear a lot, the three-mile radius is consistent with environmental justice literature and studies, including the Environmental Justice Report on Clean Power Plants. Three miles allows most of the pollutions to dissipate in the air, okay? Rather than being a quarter of a mile from residential. That's why you hear the three-mile distance so often, because we all know the wind's out here, and maybe that will help dissipate some of these pollutants that it creates. And when it comes to relocating the power plant, please don't see us just as a number or a mark on a map, okay? We are all citizens, and we are all voters. We deserve the safe and clear and clean environment, just like all of you do. We only want the plant relocated. That's all we're looking at here. So do the right thing by rescinding your decision on the BOS Resolution 2023-223 due to the Board of Supervisor and Planning and Zoning total failure to follow the correct procedures three years prior and returning the property to residential. Thank you.[1774.11][1774.11](APPLAUSE).
Paula Franks, Dottie Norman. Paula Franks, Dottie Norman.
My name is Paula Franks. I've been a resident of Fort Mojave for eight and a half years. Most of what I was going to say has already been said by my friends and neighbors, but I did want to say that I feel so threatened. My health and quality of life is being threatened, and I should not have to be fighting this. That's your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Dottie?
Morning.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Dottie Norman, and I live on, just off Van Der Slice on Ness Perce Road in Fort Mojave. And I am once again requesting this board rescind the approval of the Amendment to Resolution 2018041 regarding the rezone of property parcel 221-35-024 from a residential classification zoning to heavy manufacturing in the vicinity of Fort Mojave, for which the Mojave Electric Corporation Co-op is intending to site a natural gas peaker plant. The initial zone rezone application was submitted by BNR Land Development and was for the specific intended purpose of a mineral reclamation plant enclosed in building only. The boss cited conditions of approval for the BNR Land Development rezoning application, and specifically, the conditions of approval were not met. Condition six explicitly states that if the conditions were not met, within the two years of the conditional approval, the property would revert back to the formal zoning classification. The boss failed to execute or comply with your own conditional approval requirements and the stated requirements, explicit requirements of the Arizona Revised Statute Annotated, Title 11, Chapter 6, Section 11-814.I. Instead, the boss accepted a request for an amendment to an expired, by two years at least, rezoned to Resolution of 2018-041, specifically for an extension request from Mojave Electric to utilize the reference location without even stating the intended purpose, for which is required on the original application. The request to the amendment from MEC, as approved by the boss, also cites a finding of fact that the neighboring area contains other uses similar to the proposed actions. That's another change from the original request for rezone. There is no proposed use cited in the MEC amendment request, which makes this determination moot. You can't make it. A solar field does not represent a similar use to a natural gas-powered peaker plant. There are significant differences between the original rezone request and the amended request by MEC, all of which were ignored by this board, and the question is why? Travis Lingenfelter recently proposed a moratorium.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Travis.
Ma'am.
Proposed the moratorium.
Your time is up. Thank you very much.
Yes. Okay? Citing the distance between residential and solar.
Ma'am, your time is up. Please, sit down. Please. We heard what everyone is saying.
In affirmation, you were a member of MEC. You financially benefit from this decision.
Call to order, ma'am. You're out of line. We've got to go, we've got to move on with this. Thank you.
You financially benefit.
I financially benefit? That's a new one. Okay, anyone? Oh, I do have a few other coming up. Now, Mark Shaver, you've signed up about public speaking. Is this about item 28? Where's Mark? Is this about the item about the call to public?
Yeah.
Okay, because you signed up for that too, so we're going to wait on that, because it's on the agenda. Patty Brubaker, same thing. Are you, is this about the call to public item? Patty? Yes? Okay, so you signed up for 28. I'll put this, make sure that you speak when we get to that issue. And Scotty McClure, you're up. But I see here that you're speaking about a private citizen.
Let me speak this.
No, I'm just telling, well, because you're speaking about a private citizen. I just want you to realize that you're talking about a private citizen.
Let me comment on them last time. Scotty, candidate for your seat, District 2. Thank you, Trump, for landslide victory last night. Boy, oh boy, do we need to change this swamp, and some of it's here. Thank you, Ron, for going after Chris Mays. I'm also going to be going after either Secretary of State or Chris Mays. I'm going to write, I'm tired of Jeannie Kinsch. Facebook, the Republican Party of this great Mojave County that has done nothing but divide us from Bullhead to these clowns that are running this Facebook page, they don't have me on it at all as running for your seat. They have Grace Heck on there, Miss Make Bullhead Worse. She signed up on March 13th. Mayor Biden signed up October, or August 7th. I signed up September 5th. They've had since September to put me on their Facebook, but they won't. And I'm going to file charges against Jeannie Kinsch. Speaking of her, Ryan, I'm asking for legal advice again. How in the heck is she getting all these restraining orders against three people from Bullhead that have the, that the Republican Committee over there? She's got restraining orders against three of them. Is she doing this on company time? I want you guys to find that out. I want to know the date she filed the complaints over there. Was she supposed to be here working at her job? I want her mileage, her cell phone, and county computer looked at. I'm making a legal complaint to the Secretary of State on this, so if you guys want to beat me to it, fine. But she needs to do one or the other. She's divided us. I just, I can't, I just can't stand that Hillary Clinton look-alike. She's using company time. And I'm glad you shot her down on her mileage last week. What a clown she was up here. You really did a good, you guys did a good job on it. Bo Helms, he's 28 years old. He has no idea what the heck a Planning and Zoning Commission is. He went to Humboldt State Arcata, Humboldt, in Arcata, California, which usually they have five Green Party people on it. So he comes here and registers as a Republican. Now I find out he didn't vote. He has no right to be up here at the podium, let alone sign up for the city council appointment, let alone being on the Planning and Zoning, which he knows nothing about. And I swear the first time when I get that seat, Hildy, I'm going to ask him to resign. You'll be the first one I'm going after. How dare him not vote?
Thank you, Scotty. All righty. That is the end of the call to public. Next up, we have the Board of Supervisors' Consent Agenda. The following items under Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion, with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In the event, the item will be moved from the Consent Agenda for separate discussion and action. Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Item 7, 8, and 18 removed from the Consent Agenda, please.
Okay, Supervisor Bishop. Supervisor Lingenfelter.
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Item 5, Madam Chair.
Very good. And I have nothing, so I need a motion to approve Items 5 through 21, minus 7, 8, and 18.
And 5.
Oh, and 5, I'm sorry.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Okay, Item 5. This is to approve the appointment of Republican precinct committeemen.
Supervisor Johnson.
Oh, Supervisor, oh, Supervisor Johnson, I thought he said none this morning. I'm sorry. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no backup on these people that they're asking us to appoint to precinct committeemen, which is an elected position, so without any identification of these people, I move to deny.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Burford, is anyone else who wants to speak? Okay, I'm so sorry, I didn't hear that. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye. Motion carries.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 7, approve and sign Amendment to Intergovernmental Agreement Number CTR 060274 between Mojave County and the State of Arizona for Mojave County Department of Public Health to extend the agreement through June 30, 2025, and to accept $295,798 for participation in CDC's bridge access. Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm sure there's some members of the public that have requested to speak on this item.
We have one. Jennifer Esposito.
Thank you, Board, Madam Chair. Jennifer Esposito, Kingman. I'm requesting that you deny this. I mean, we've all had discussions in the past about grant money and how that's entangling and whatnot, and my husband did bring up the impending agenda of the World Health Organization. When you take money from the CDC, you kind of sell your soul to the devil in a way. But I've been on record for a long time advocating that we do not, that the county not engage in conducting what essentially amounts to medical experimentation on its citizens. And I think that the health director doesn't understand what I believe that his job should be, and I say that because we had a conversation about it a while back. He thought that the job of the health director was to make sure that these gene therapy injections were available to the public. I think that his job is to make sure that the public has informed consent. During the plandemic, scamdemic, whatever you want to call it, I raised that issue, and it was never addressed. The county was involved in this, these types of programs, we're looking to renew this program in some way, but we never showed the informed consent form. So, and I don't think it's just this particular thing, but I think if the county's going to engage in dispensing something, that the county, to cover its own liability, should have a very thorough informed consent form for the public, letting them know what the risks, the benefits, the side effects, the efficacy. You know, I mean, we all know the hashtag died suddenly, right? hindsight being 2020. A lot of people have done this in the past. It might not do it going forward, but I have yet to see anybody actually produce the informed consent form that was used before, and I don't think that the county should accept this money and engage in this program without having a proper informed consent for the public. This is allegedly intended to provide this treatment, we'll call it, this therapy, whatever, to people who are economically challenged. However, I'd like to point out to the Board that if you're that economically challenged, you're probably on access, and you don't need this grant money or this program if you really, really want to be a human guinea pig. And if you do, that's your absolute right and more power to you. But I just don't think that this is the business of the county, and grant money or not, I'd like to see you deny accepting this grant today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comment from the Board?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to hear from Dr. Kingsley.
Oh, okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Supervisors. Just to give a broad overview for this and have this discussion and transparency to this discussion, as noted with comments and on these points, that there's two sides saying that we do not represent all that, and we should allow people to be able to make their own choice. And so that is my job, to allow people to make their own choice. The reason that we considered and accepted this funding, which is a reimbursement plan, so if nobody takes advantage of this, we don't receive this money. It's purely reimbursement. There's no education to this. There's no forced education. There's no plan. It simply provides a vaccine to somebody if they want it, if they're uninsured or their insurance does not provide it. This will also be provided at CVS and Walgreens, who applied for it and did receive it. We are doing it for those in our rural communities that do not have a CVS or Walgreens and would like that opportunity to have it. Currently, right now, since 2022, there's about 100,000 individuals within our county that accepted and the COVID, the COVID vaccine. Wow, I just pronounced all of that, sorry. CoV, COVID, wow, there we go, COVID vaccine. So we have, our uninsured rate population in Mojave County is about 10%, so about 22,000 individuals. This funding would provide up to about 5,000 vaccines if somebody needed it. And again, this is their choice. When speaking about, everyone is, is everyone being afforded their same rights? They have the right to choose their health care if they want this or if they don't. We're not forcing it. Is there informed consent? Yes, there is. Any vaccine we give, we provide that informed consent, just like any medication you go to, you receive this gigantic long list of all this stuff. Do they read that? That's up to them to do that. But do we provide informed consent? Yes, we do. Is there information that they can be informed on, online? There are numerous resources. That is their due diligence, and that is individuals' right, and that's what I'm protecting, somebody's right to choose their health care and their choices. And this is all that is. That just provides funding for that.
Okay. Any questions? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Dr. Kingsley, does access currently provide coverage for the COVID-19 vaccination?
I believe they do, yes.
Does Medicare provide coverage for the COVID-19 vaccination?
I believe they do, yes.
So this would be people that make enough money that they're not on access, not old enough to be on Medicare, didn't have private insurance or their own insurance or employer-provided insurance.
All those reasons.
So we're talking about a small, a small amount of people.
Yes.
There's, so you said that Walgreens and CVS are already providing this service?
Yes, I believe they received access to this bridge grant as well, so they applied for it. And when they applied for it, when we applied for it, they had not yet applied for it. So we initially took that step, that if nobody else in the county applied for this, then we would, just to be able to provide it. Since then, they did apply for it, and it looks like they are being granted it. This is just us then as a tertiary or secondary type of being able to provide this more broadly for access within our community and through our mobile unit. We would be able to provide it on our mobile unit where needed.
So I believe once upon a time, the government was paying for these vaccinations. Did that change?
They were. The majority of all these individuals during the pandemic were covered by the, by the funding that was provided through COVID. This now is part of the Bridge Access Program that covers adults on many other types of vaccines as well. So it has, I would say, transitioned to a more flu-like type of annual, which we thought would normally evolve to and perhaps should have from the beginning, but a normal type of flu-updated vaccine that it takes into account the different variants, how it evolves, what it is and the science behind it, and same thing on flu. There is a point of any of the vaccines that, yes, are they, are they 1% effective? They're not, but it is according to the variants and how they evolve. So this is just an updated vaccine for those that previously received one.
I saw a study last week that I thought was interesting from Kaiser Permanente out of California, and I believe it was in people 55 and older, and it said you were slightly more likely to end up in the hospital if you had been vaccinated than if you had not been vaccinated.
And that is, and that is a valid point? And is it the same across for other, for other? What's also influenced it? Was it just the vaccine, or is it their comorbidities? Or is it anything else that goes with that? So I would look at that as some 0.55 and older, do they have more chance of being in the public? Is it just for COVID? Is it for something else, or is it involved with COVID?
I believe they actually grouped them by their comorbidities also.
By their comorbidities?
Yes, so it was pretty well done. Of course, the answer from the pharmaceutical company was that, oh, well, that's because they need the updated shot.
Yeah.
Have the, are they, are the pharmaceutical companies still operating under their waiver of liability? So they have no liability for any damages that their vaccine might create?
I would have to check into that, so why, I'm not the pharmaceutical company or that, and I do not know if that applies to all vaccines across the board, if it's just COVID or if it's all the vaccines.
I think that particular one was just COVID that the...
COVID related on that?
Yeah, that they were given a waiver of liability because they didn't actually do human testing on the stuff. They human tested it on the people that took it.
And that, and that's the importance of informed consent, that somebody, if they were to take that, they need to be informed that that is a possibility, but it would be their choice.
Right. But they ginned up so much fear that I had people beaten on my office door back during the so-called pandemic to get that, I had to help them get their vaccination because they were, they were that afraid. I don't think that fear exists anymore.
No.
And frankly, I think if people want to, if, if it's not really an issue of being too poor to afford the vaccine, I think that middle people either choose not to be insured. Basically, I think that's really what it boils down to, is people that choose not to be insured. If they want to go get vaccinated, I don't, you know, what is they even, what does CVS charge or what does Walgreens charge?
One dose, it ranges from $115 to $130. So it just depends on the, on the provider.
And if people, if people are concerned and want to be vaccinated, they can pay for it themselves if they're...
They would be able to, yeah.
But that's my feelings, Madam Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
You have something? Supervisor Bishop?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Dr. Kinsley, what is the purpose of the Public Health Department?
Public, the purpose of the Public Health Department is to protect and preserve the health of our communities. And so that is primarily done through prevention, prevention methods to help individuals be able to access care where they needed and be able to protect and preserve their choice of a health, of their level of health that they wish for, so.
Is this a mandated service that we provide?
It is not mandated.
Okay. Do we provide other vaccines to the public at no cost?
We do, yeah. When, when available, flu vaccines, RSV. RSV, it's a lot more expensive, so that went on a very limited basis, usually based on grants because it's more expensive. But primarily, a good example would be flu vaccines.
Okay, so if we approve this grant and you don't use all of it, my understanding is the balance will be returned?
We don't even receive the money in the sense, on that point, it's reimbursement. So if what we, yeah, so if we don't even apply one, then we wouldn't get even reimbursed for one. So the money is only there for reimbursement.
Okay, so if 50 people come to Health Department and get the vaccine, then...
Then 50 people that were qualified for it would be able to receive it under those terms, yeah.
Okay. And we're not forcing people to do this? It's people that...
Not at all. Not even advertising it, so.
Okay.
Okay. Madam Chairman, I'll, I want to see if anyone else has questions.
Okay.
Okay. Supervisor Johnson? Hello?
No, Madam Chair, no questions.
Supervisor Lingensfeldter?
No questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a quick question. So this is an extension. So we've already done this before.
Yes.
Do you know how many people have taken advantage of this program?
Yeah, so we had previously of those. So it would be around, around the 100, about 100,000 within our, within our, within our county are vaccinated. So I'd say the majority of them took advantage of the programs of the provided COVID vaccines.
Wait, wait. Repeat that number again?
101. As of 10/4/2023, on record, we have 101,500 people that received the COVID vaccine.
But I'm talking about that did it through this program?
Through the Bridge Access Program. So previously, as referenced through Supervisor Gould, did majority of these individuals for free, receive free access to the COVID vaccine during the pandemic? Yes, they did. Now, did some of these percentage perhaps pay for it out of pocket or through their insurance? Yes, possibly, but that was as of 2023. So this was a transition into this bridge program, but previously, these were, these majority of all these individuals did receive access to this program or access to funding that provided a free vaccine.
Wow. Okay. I need a motion if there's nothing else.
Chairman Angus, motion to approve.
Do I hear a second? Okay, dies for lack of second. I need a new motion.
I'll second.
Madam Chairman, I move that item seven be denied.
I need a second? I'll second that.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, three to two for refusal for that. Okay. Number eight, approve and sign amendment number to the contract number 21-P-06 title escrow services with Chicago title. For it's an extension of a contract. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. A member of the public wanted to speak to this.
Very good. Anyone want to speak about this? Anyone? Number eight, about the title contract, title insurance contract? Oh, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't know for sure this item would be pulled. I, I just want to say that I think we've all followed some of the issues with these abatements and liens and different things and all of the title search stuff that goes on. And no disrespect to the title company, I know they do a good job, but I think that Supervisor Gould has done a very good job in pointing out that basically, we pay them to get records from us. So, you know, it just seems that it may not be a useful thing for taxpayer money to do if they're just coming to the county for records and we already have access to those records. So I just think that that's something that the Board should consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. DeShazer.
Chuck DeShazer, Topoc, Arizona. One issue that I have with this that we've discussed over the many, many months that encompass 2023 comes down to when I was speaking with William Davis on the issue of the title searches that were being done for abatements and that kind of thing. I asked straight out, is there a requirement anywhere in the law for this? And he said, no, it's just good practice. And as you'll see in an upcoming item 22 today, somebody's being charged for four title searches on one house or one residence where they live, times, I'm not sure if it's 75, 85, or 105 for today. I find that totally unacceptable when, you know, government employees are just common practice spending somebody else's money if it ends up getting before this Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll need a motion.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I move that number eight be denied.
Second. Motion second.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
If I may, this is an, this is an amendment to an existing contract. And while we can debate which item we need title search on, this provides us access to title searches when we do need them. And the risk of completing a transaction without a title search of knowing who owns what, I would say far exceeds any of the associated concerns with this contract. So I appeal to you, the Board, to consider extending this contract. Again, we can debate when we use it on one item, but we do need access to title searches. We, county employees and departments are not equipped to complete title searches because they exist in multiple departments, not just one.
Right. So, I mean, even if we did it in-house, there's still a cost involved in it for our employees and their time, right? And what about liability? I mean, there's a reason for title searches. So if something goes wrong, the liability is not on us, it's with the title company, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair and Board members.
We talked about this for years.
It's that liability that concerns me the most and county staff.
Right, so really, it's about liability. Again, we, every time this comes up, we talk about it. And it is a good question, why don't we do it in-house since it's our records, but there are reasons for it. Madam Chair? Yes. Just to clarify, was your motion to deny or to adopt?
Deny.
Deny, thank you. Okay, so we...
I'm going to withdraw my second because I thought the motion was to approve. I clearly saw.
Okay, so that's been, so I do have a motion to deny and I'll need a second for that. Any second? Hearing none, motion fails. I need a new motion.
Chairman Angus, motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Out there in phone land? I'll second.
Yes.
Okay, there's a little bit of a delay in the phone, so. Okay, we do have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. All right, number 18. Approve the report of routine personnel actions taken during the pay period of December 16, 2023 through December 29, 2023. That's by the county manager. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I read the wrong one. Approve out-of-county travel for shelter manager to Las Vegas, Nevada to attend cat adoption training event at Nevada SPCA on January 29, 30, 2024. All the travel is grant-funded with no impact on the general fund. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Since it's funded, grant-funded, I don't particularly have a problem with the funding. But I thought it would be interesting, since we're, essentially, they're going on the, on their payroll, that if we, when we send people off to these events, if they could write us a brief, say, half-page report of what did they learn?
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I'd like to add that.
Okay.
So I'd like to add that, that they, that the attendee give us a brief half-page report when she returns on what, what she did. And she can just email that too, she doesn't have to come and present it.
Okay, you want to make that in the form of a motion?
Sure. I move that we approve number 18 with the caveat that the attendee write us a brief half-page report that is emailed to us on what they learned at the event.
Okay. So I, do I have a second on that? Anyone out there? For a second? Okay.
Second.
Motion dies, lack of second.
I thought I heard...
Was that, wait, was that a cough or a second?
Second.
Okay, we do have a second. Phew. Okay, we got a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Off to a regular agenda. Number 22.
I'm, I'm sorry. We, we need to clarify the vote because I...
Am I going too fast?
Well, I think there's a delay with the phone and I believe...
Okay.
I only heard three votes.
Okay, you want to do a roll call vote?
Sure.
Well, tell, tell me, tell me what would be helpful to you.
I, I just need clarification from Supervisor Lingensfeldter. What was your vote?
I voted aye.
And Supervisor Johnson?
Aye. I second it also.
Okay, and Supervisor Bishop?
No.
Okay. Okay, so thank you, because that's not what I heard either. All right, so it passed four to one. Number 22, brought to us by Tim Walsh. This is discussion, possible action, approve or deny the appeals and notices of assessments. And we do have the applicants here, but can we have Tim Walsh come up to, or online to explain this item?
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Good, thank you. I have a brief presentation available for the Board. If you'd like me to go through that now, I can go through it now or I can wait until the applicant states their case and requests, basically their reasoning for appeal. Just a brief synopsis, this was an appeal, or this was an abatement that we performed back in June, June 26 through 29. And the Board approved the assessment on November 20. That assessment was posted on November 30. The applicant then submitted an appeal on December 29 for that assessment. So basically, the abatement was completed, the assessment has been posted, and the applicant is appealing that assessment.
Okay. Does anybody want to hear the presentation before the applicants or after?
Before.
You want to see the presentation before?
Sure.
Okay, let's hear your presentation, Mr. Walsh.
All right, let me make sure I can do this. This is the Rosebaugh abatement appeal. This is for parcels 30806. I've got a, I don't know if you all are getting an echo there, but it's getting pretty rough here. Let's see, so it's for parcels 30806. Okay. 30806, 468A, 30806, 469, and 30806, 470, and 30806, 597D. We first started with this property, we, we've been working on this property since 2014. It's been in and out of violation. Our, our most recent case, we received our initial complaint on, in December of 2019, and we've been working on this case since then. Notices have been sent out to the property owner beginning in 2020, February 5, 2020, February, or I'm sorry, April 30, 2021, December 15, 21, February 24, 22, July 19, 2022, December 23, 2022. So those are all notices sent to the owner, both posted on the property and mailed via certified mail to the property owner, notifying them that they were in violation. With no action being taken, abatement letters were sent, one in January, January 31 of 2023, and again in March 9, 2023, again posted on the property and mailed certified mail. The property remained in violation. So on June, from June 26 through June 29, the abatement was performed by our contracted, our, our abatement contractor. And just go through some of these, these pictures. On the left, you've got before, on the right, you have after. We went through, we worked with the owner. The owner was present during the abatement, allowed us on-site, and we actually worked with him in identifying what items could remain, what, what items needed to go, basically that constituted the, the trash, the rubbish and debris. As we go through the, through the show, the slideshow here, you'll see, towards the end, we have a number of the items that were, were allowed to stay. This photo here, you have Mr. Rosebaugh himself sorting through the items, setting aside the items that he deemed of value and wanted to retain. There were many issues, many, much garbage, much debris. I mean, this was one of the, the, we, we see a lot of things during our, during our abatements, and this was one of the, the more problematic cases that we've dealt with. Here's the following picture. So, so the property is four separate properties, and I believe some of the comments that you've received from, from the public may not take that into consideration. There are four separate properties. As we went out to the property, we, we didn't charge each time, you know, for, we didn't charge a trip for each property. We, we, we separate, basically divided those trips by four. So there was, you know, some cost savings, I guess you could say, to the, to the property owner in that, you know, we inspected all four properties at the same time. We didn't, we didn't charge four times for, you know, one trip. It was one trip divided by the four properties. I mean, you see just a lot of rubbish, debris. This pile here, actually, you've got some fecal matter mixed in with it. You've got a boat just piled full of garbage. Again, really, a really rough property. Again, here's a wheelbarrow that had fecal matter in it, on the ground. You've got syringes on the property. So, you know, this is, really qualifies for dangerous to the public, a nuisance, you know, public hazard, public nuisance. Again, just a bunch more of the, the trash and debris that we see out here. And this is, I don't know if... more of the, the trash and debris that we see out here. And this is, I don't know if I mentioned, this is out in the chloride, chloride townsite area. Just, I don't know. There, there was some talk in the appeal about a, an awning being taken from his property. This is the awning or the carport that's being referred to. This carport, as you can see, was being held up by the trash. As the trash and debris was removed, the awning came down with it. There was talk of structures and, and that being taken. Many of those structures were basically supported by the trash as well. There was two sheds that, that were basically falling down already, that basically as the trash and debris was, was taken away, they, they were not able to stand on their own. This, this shed actually remained. That one did not get taken down. Just some more pictures of, of what was abated. So I, I think really, as you look at these pictures, the intent is, is really to show, to justify the, the cost of the abatement. There was a lot of, of, of trash and debris that needed to be removed from this site. This shed here is, is one that was, you can see it's, it's falling apart already, and as that trash was removed, the, you know, basically fell apart on its own, and that was, was taken away. There's the shed completely filled with, with stuff. As we go, let's see, this was a, a, an old trailer that's been converted to, to storage. It was falling apart as well. That is another one that, that was removed. So there, there, we did leave a number of items. We, like I, I mentioned, during the abatement, we worked with Mr. Rosebaugh to, to allow him to collect those items that he saw, you know, of value that, that he was able to set aside that were not taken. Here's some of those items that were, were left behind following the abatement. Toolboxes, antique refrigerators. These, you'll see all of these items here, he, he was able to set aside outside of the abatement. These items were all left. So you can see there's still quite a bit left. But overall, this, this property has been an issue for quite some time. We abated it, and I, I digress. This hearing is, is really about whether or not the, the charges, the assessment is justified. This is the appeal for those assessments.
Okay.
What we're looking at here is, is whether or not the, the charges that were charged were reasonable. And this is a breakdown of, of staff time that was, was charged to the account. During that abatement, we had, we had to have one staff person on-site during the whole abatement, not to mention all of the inspections that had occurred going out to the, all four properties and, and performing those inspections. As I mentioned, there was a number of inspections, a number of, number of notices being sent. Title company was researched in order to determine that Mr. Rosebaugh was the, the owner of the property, that there were no other, no other owners or interested parties that we needed to notify of the, of the abatement. And these are for each of the properties. There is the breakdown of Old Trails work, basically, and they, they broke it down by property. So this is for 469, a total of 2824. These are the, the dump receipts for the landfill, landfill receives, basically taking that garbage to dump it at the landfill. Let's see, the first one, you had six and a half tons, the next one, you had almost seven tons. Because of the, the size of this abatement, we did have to have a, a portageon at the site. So this was the cost of the portageon. This was split between all, all four properties. Let's see, this is for 468A, $3,216.22. And then from 36A, we had six tons of trash, and then another 4.6 tons of trash, and another 5.3 tons of trash, all from 46A. So, I mean, just looking at the, the tonnage, that's just two properties, but as you look at the tonnage, the amount of work that goes into loading those bins, picking up all that trash, and then hauling it to the landfill, does require quite a bit of cost and labor. Here, we've got the next one. This is for 5, 597D, told 2,789. This is for Old Trails work, and then the dump receipts, we had 5.73 tons of trash, eight tons of trash. Then get, this is just that portageon again. And then the last property here, this being 470, $2851 for Old Trails, and then we had three and a half tons of trash, trash, another one at 1.23 tons of trash, and then a point seven ton here. So a whole lot of trash and debris that, that was collected at the site and then hauled off to the landfill. This is the notice to abate that was sent to the property, letting them know that, you know, they needed to address it or it would be abated. Here is Mr. Ro, Rosebaugh's signature on the notice of failure to abate, which was sent to him saying, you know, he didn't follow up with the abatement, therefore we would be performing that abatement. His signature showing that he received it. Again, just going through his signature on each of them. And I think that's it. This is after we issued the notice to abate. Mr. Rosebaugh wrote us a letter stating that he would have all the trash and debris completed by April 5. However, obviously, it was not done and, and the abatement went forward. So that's the end of my slideshow. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from the board? Anyone? Waiting for the delay. Okay, so I have three people, I've got four people signed up, but three of them say that they are the applicants. I've only heard about one applicant. So we'll start with Dean Rosbauer. Dean? And after Dean, it's Timothy Murphy, and then Tom Chance.
My name's Dean Rosbauer. I had the abatement. I would like to put in for a continuance until I get the file of what, what the exact dates of what happened and what went on there. I haven't got that yet. I haven't seen that. I didn't know I could get that until just a little while ago. So I would put, like, put in for a continuance with that. I watched, the first time I, I watched the November 20th board meeting last night, and I heard, I just, I feel that one of the people should, their vote should be recused from being valid due to, I've had incidents with Jean Bishop through the years, different things going on. And I feel that she's prejudiced and biased upon her decision and would be. There was nobody rejoicing in the street when this all happened. I also was informed by Max Kittle that all the scrap metal was going to be, be turned in for scrap, and it was going to come off the price, and that was going to make a difference in things. And I didn't see anything for that. And, you know, Max Kittle also told me there was going to be 10 to 14 days, and it was only three and a half days. He said it was going to be 14 days at $14,000. I seen three and a half days at $14,000 still, and no money for the, or no return for the scrap metal. That's why I appealed that. And it's my understanding that a detailed list should have been proven, or provided to me of what they were going to take, not what they were going to leave, before this all went down. And I never received or never any list at all. As far as my sheds and the awning goes, I was also told that I could have a safe place and, for safe haven for putting stuff that I did want, you know. And when they came to do this, they took everything, including the sheds and the contents, and I had provided myself, you know, an area that I thought was going to be safer for them, for this. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for this applicant? Anyone? Okay, I have another applicant, which I'm a little confused about, but Timothy Murphy.
Hello, I'm Timothy Murphy, and I'm just here on behalf of Dean Rosbauer. That, I helped clean the yard up for many months before this all happened. And it wasn't as bad as they were making it out to be. And I witnessed Max Kittle say that all the scrap metal, all the metal that was on the property was going to be recycled and deducted off of the bill. And I don't see none of that ever happening.
Okay, I'll let the other person speak, and then we'll address that, okay? Timothy Murphy, Tom Chance. Mr. Chance, are you here?
Ms. Jean.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Tony Chance.
Ah. Tony Chance, hi. Thank you. How are you? Good, thank you. Okay, I'm appealing the invoice for several reasons. General accounting principle for one of them. There was no date on the invoice of when this service was provided. You're saying it was in June 29. I'm getting up there in years, but I don't think I'm quite up there in years. Seems to me it was in May. So what was it, May or June? There's no date on the invoice. I couldn't verify which it is. It was nice to see a breakdown of all the invoices, the hours and the manpower and this, that, and the other. They did not provide that with the original invoice, and that's what we were asking for. This appeal is for the, the, it wasn't that the service wasn't provided. It was provided, make no mistake about it. It was grueling, it was appalling as an American, but it was provided. However, the charges, I agree with, he's saying that he, for example, mileage, let's take mileage. I know for a fact he didn't drive back and forth four times to look at the property, let's be silly. But so divided by four, why don't we just have one invoice for all four properties? I don't understand that. I don't understand why they said four mailings. They mailed it once. The abatement was once. On top of it all, when does it become abatement cost, and when does it become regular cost of business? Do we not pay their, their charges? Do we not pay as taxpayers their salaries to go out and look at all the, you know, the property of the county? It seems to me that we do. We pay for the mileage to them, we pay for the mileage to go, we pay for the inspections to go look at it, we pay for this, that, and the other. But when it comes to an abatement, when does it become the abatement's expense, and there's not regular business, daily expense? That's my other question. That seems, also in addition was the invoicing deal, the date of it. It was dated, the invoice was dated August 21. We did not receive a copy of that until December 1. After you'd already had a meeting about this property we didn't even know about. How fair is that? That's not fair at all. It's not all transparent, very shady, very unethical in my opinion. Again, it was quoted for $14,000 for 14 days. So we're thinking, okay, it was three and a half, they were there three and a half days, three and a half days. And it's $14,900 was the total. How can that be? That doesn't even make logical sense to me. I'm glad, again, I'm glad that he was able to provide me with a breakdown. I wish he would have included with the invoice. That might have saved a little bit of time, which is basically what we're asking for. I would also like to ask for an extension, because yes, I wasn't aware that we could get a copy of our file. Again, ignorance is bliss, but not in this case. And it's not an excuse by any means. However, I have to plead ignorance, because I've never seen in my life anything like this, ever. I'm, granted, not from this area, lived here only about 15 years, 20 years, never seen an abatement, never went through one, never want to go through one again. But I understand the, the reasoning behind them, I do. But to say that this man was able to choose what he wanted to choose, to pick, what he wanted to save? No, that's not true. To say that it was increment on the, it was compost, it was not poop. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Walsh, do you, you want to answer any of those questions? But I want to know is about the metals, that there seems to be a disagreement on what was agreed on.
Chairman Angus, thank you. Yeah, as far as the abatement goes, we do not have in our contract with our contracted operator, there, there's not a clause per se in our contract to reimburse the county for recyclables, for metals, those types of things. My understanding it is their practice to take those things into consideration when they're providing us a quote for the, for the bid, or for the, the property. But it's, there's not anything requiring them to reimburse us after the fact for those, those metals. But like I said, I believe in my, my discussions with them is those are things that they do look at as they're quoting us for the job, for what it would take to do the work. So there, there's no expectation of, of reimbursement for any, any recyclables, but rather on the front end, my understanding is that's taken into account when they're providing us a quote to do the job.
Okay, and so they're, they're stating that they never got the breakdown of the, of the bill. Why would that be?
Chairman Angus, it's a good question. And actually, in, in going through this, working with, with staff and with the attorney's office, the, the process for an abatement is, is we notify the violator of, of the issue and give them ample opportunity to abate the process, the problem, the, the violation themselves. If they don't, then we, we give them a notice to abate. And in that notice to abate, we indicate that, you know, we, we give an estimated cost for what that, that abatement would cost. And in our letters to Mr. Rosebaugh, there was an estimate that was included, and that was $20,000 to do this abatement. So I believe the, the talk about $14,000 or how much that would be, I believe that may have, talking with my inspectors, they said at some points during the, during the abatement, he may have asked how much it was going to cost. And, and I believe they may have mentioned that it was looking around $14,000, that that was the quote that we had received, you know, around that, that amount. But our notice to Mr. Rosebaugh himself indicated that it could cost upwards of $20,000 for the, for the abatement. So we did properly notice that, that the cost would be $20,000. So we, we noticed, notified them that they needed to abate. We issued a letter saying that they failed to abate and that we would be performing the abatement if, if it was not complete. And then we proceeded with the abatement. Once the abatement's complete, that cost is then assessed to the property, and that's what was brought to the board in November. If, if the board, in November, if the board would have elected to say, hey, we, we don't want to assess this property, no assessment would have gone to the property. Therefore, we wouldn't have sent anything to them. It would have just been completed. So ultimately, we had to wait until the board approved that assessment to be able to then go and, and notify the property that the assessment was placed. But as far as the abatement goes, it was, we, we notified them that they were in violation, that they needed to clean up. Like I said, we've been working on this, working with this property as far back as 2014, but this specific case has been going since the end of 2019. So we, they've had ample time to clean it up. They chose not to. We went through, notified, 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 and then we abated it. Those costs were then brought to the board for approval. Once it was approved by the board, then the, the property was posted for that assessment and, and given, you know, and they, they were given that, the amount. We could, absolutely, we can give them copies of, of our invoices that we received from the various agencies through, from our contractor, from the landfill and all those. We were happy to share that information. But basically, what was posted on the site was the, the total amount of the assessment and, and notifying them that a lien would be placed on the property.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, and, you bet.
No, go ahead. Do you have, want to finish?
Do you have one to finish?
I was just going to say, statute does allow, I know that they've mentioned some time to address it, statute does allow for payment options as well for an amount this size, for an assessment this size. I believe it would go at least 10 years, if not more, to be able to repay the assessment.
One of the speakers said that she believed that the county should, since this is already a function of the county and this is what these people do, that the county should pick up the cost, but sort of the consequence of that would be that people wouldn't clean up because the county's going to come and do it for free, right? So I just wanted to put that out there because it's one of those things that sound kind of good, but when you really think about it, it's not that good. Anyone else want to talk to Mr. Walsh? Supervisor Bishop.
Yes, I just wanted to speak on the fact that Mr. Rosbaugh said that I am biased, and my only bias is the fact that I've known Mr. Rosbaugh for some 25 years, and I know of his lifestyle, I know of his, the abuse with family matters and everything, but as it comes to this abatement matter, they, the county has given ample time to clean up, and notifications have been made, and this is probably the most, the most challenging case that I've seen since I've been on the board some nine years.
Okay.
If I'm biased, maybe that's it.
Thank you. One more person signed up, Chuck DeShazer. I don't have anything. Oh, yes, you did. I'm sorry.
Yeah, my name's Chuck DeShazer from Topoc. I just want to state, to start with, I don't really have any problem with abatements as long as, because they are necessary, but as long as they're done in a normal procedural way. And I don't know if all five of the supervisors have received the letter that I received last Wednesday evening and have read through that from Ryan Esplin's office stating that I was correct on the Fourth Amendment issues, and I haven't been able to see the files on this case yet, but according to that letter, he's stated in it that the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, which covers Arizona, agrees that you should have to issue a warrant along with a list of everything that is to be taken. So I would, if it's your primary residence, as he stated in that letter, but the fact of the matter is, I'm not seeing that occurring in this gentleman's primary residence as I understand it, so I would ask that you throw this out to begin with. If not, I would ask that you at least give a continuation for this to come up at your next board meeting after they get a chance to actually see the charges and the breakdowns and their files, because if I'm correct, there were, I spoke on this issue back on November 20th, and there was, I believe, 18 separate inspections done on this property, and I've gone over several of the files that have been brought up by the Development Services over the course of time, and they're charging a lot of times for these inspections that go back to 2013, 2014, and they're adding them all into this, the one abatement that they're going forward with. And you should be able to find it on, there's a document right there that is from my abatement, but it comes down to, it's a worksheet that they break down how many hours they spent and what the issue was for each allotted time. On this particular abatement, as you can see, they give the dates and everything, what was done, and the timeframe that it was done, and Tim Walsh just stated that they had someone out there, had to hire a portage on for three and a half days. From my recollection, on the 20th of November, we had a statement of, they get $35 times one hour for each of the four properties. Well, that sure sounds like they're not doing things the way they should be doing because I know my time is up.
Thank you.
I would ask for a continuation and also that Jean Bishop.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. What is the pleasure of the board? If there are any more questions? Oh, God, why do I keep forgetting you? You're here all the time.
You're welcome.
No.
You possibly forget me. Jennifer Esposito, yeah. This is in District Four, which I'm running for, and I think it's clear that one man's compost is another man's excrement, and I have no way of knowing by looking at the pictures. The one gentleman said that some of the property had been cleaned up. I don't know when those pictures were taken, if they were taken the morning of the abatement or if they were taken upon the initial assessment, if any work had been done in between by the residents on the property. My concern is the process that leads to the amounts that end up on the abatement, and also the process that Development Services goes through, sort of like Alice going down the rabbit hole. The deeper I go down this Development Services thing, the more I find things that are a little bit shocking and disturbing to me. I was here at the meeting when you guys approved the amounts and the property owner was not. He says that he was not notified. That for me is a problem. That should have been something that could have been addressed earlier on. I think that what the lady who spoke was saying is that essentially, like, if you pay property tax, let's say to a fire district, the fire department doesn't charge you for mileage to come out and put out the fire, they don't charge you hourly rates for how long they're on the property for that. And I absolutely am sure, you know, chloride is a historical gem in Mojave County, and I'm sure that the residents there are all quite relieved that the property is cleaned up. That's not my issue. My issue is, okay, fine, the company that had to remove the property has a bill, maybe they made promises they couldn't keep about credits and, you know, recycling, we'd all like to see more recycling. I saw a Rubbermaid shed there that I would have liked to have abated, I would have taken that, but apparently the county took it. You know, I saw what appeared to be an insulin needle. I have no idea if anybody on the property is diabetic, but the reality is, is that the county charges a fee to appeal, which we've already determined is not statutorily authorized. The county mayor may not have given him adequate notice prior to the amount being assessed. When you have a court case and you're a defendant, you're entitled to something called discovery under Brady versus Maryland. It's clear that this gentleman did not see his file prior to today's hearing, that he would like time to review his file. I think that's a reasonable request, and I, my issue is really more in the fact that Development Services says, we're already getting paid a salary or a wage, you know, and whatnot, but every time we drive to somebody's place, we're going to charge mileage, we're going to charge to inspect, to re-inspect, to re-inspect, we're going to charge for every notification. So my issue is really sort of in the details of coming to the total amount. So that's just all I wanted to say, and thank you.
Any other discussion?
Chairman, if I may. So just a couple of things here to, just to be clear. One item that Mr. DeShazer pointed out, I did send a letter to the board, I hope that you've read that. If not, I just want to point out one thing in there is, and what the letter said, main point here is, I should have stated, the Fourth Amendment applies to the seizure of properties involved in the abatement process. That's the abatement process. What we have before the board today is the assessment process. And by statute and by ordinance, what you're determining, excuse me, by ordinance what you're determining, let me just pull that up, and this is the basis of the appeal, is the notice of appeal shall address the inaccuracies or unreasonableness of the cost of the abatement. So that's what the board here needs to decide. Is there any inaccuracies or is there anything that is unreasonable in those costs? I'll note in the backup, the gentleman who wrote this appeal, he addresses that, he addresses those. He thinks, he says, these are why this is not reasonable and these things, and many of those arguments that are made here today. So just to be clear, though, what the board is deciding today is that abatement, is the cost, is the assessment. Is that assessment, is it reasonable? Are there any inaccuracies in it? That's what you're determining. Whether the abatement was legal or not, that's not for the board here to decide, that's not what the board is here for. You're here, hearing the appeal on the notice to, on the notice of assessment. If you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer it as well.
Any questions?
Oh, sorry, if I can add one other thing, too.
Oh, go ahead.
I will, no, I'm a lawyer.
I know.
Lawyers do that. I will say, you also, when you're looking at that issue of the seizure, you're looking at it on a case-by-case basis, and if you look at that letter, I was looking at his particular instance. We're not looking at it here, there's all kinds of factors that you look into when you're looking at the reasonableness of a search, the seizure, the warrant requirement, exceptions and things like that. There's a lot of different things, and I haven't looked at that, you'd have to look at that in this particular case, but that's not before this board here. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, I need a motion. Yes?
Chairman Angus, I'll make a motion that we deny the appeals.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Against? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Can we take a 10-minute break, please? Is that okay with everyone?
You're the chairman.
Yeah, I know, but I'm very nice, I'm asking everybody. Is that okay?
Sure.
All right. Thank you.[1268.26] I'm talking to them. We, okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Clerk, do we still have the supervisors online? Supervisor Linganfelter? Supervisor Johnson?
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Supervisor Linganfelter?
No, huh? Okay, well, we hope he comes back.
Okay, we're going to continue the meeting. We're on item number 23, brought to us by Human Resources. Discussion Possible Action. Mr. Shager, can you please keep it down? Thank you. Discussion Possible Action: Approve the Proposed Language Changes to Personnel Policies and Procedures, Section 6.12.
Yes, ma'am, this is Ken.
Okay, Ken.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, this policy update is working with the Financial Services Department to update and clean up parts of the policy that we believe needed clarification. And also, a change to the policy that for all travel, overnight travel form, must be filled out, not just getting in advance. And then, the other piece is going to the GSA rate as a standard. Since all the rates are going up, we'll just go with the GSA rate.
Okay. Any questions?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Ken, in there somewhere, I saw that elected officials buying meals for other people is reimbursable. Is that true?
I didn't. Okay, it says, "County employees shall not pay for another person's meal regardless of whether the other person is a county employee or business associate. However, exceptions apply to the county manager, presiding judge, elected officials, and other classifications approved by the county manager." So yes, sir, that is true.
Members, I'd like to strike that exception so that the elected officials and the county manager and judges are not able to buy meals for other people at the taxpayers' expense.
Okay.
And that is 6.14E1.
Okay, is that the motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion? Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Okay, motion carries. Onto number 24. Did you have everything, clerk? Everyone's vote? How about Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Johnson, what was your vote?
It was against the motion, but I do have a little discussion if Supervisor Gould would hear it.
We're having a little trouble hearing you. Can you talk louder?
Yes, I can talk louder. I can talk lower. I can sing. There's a lot of things that I can do. One of the things they had Supervisor Gould, which I didn't agree with in the past, was people traveling to Phoenix, they would stay with relatives or friends, and they were allowed to take those people to dinner instead of charging for rooms. I don't know if that's something you want to address, too.
But we're not going there.
Yeah, I don't think I'm interested in addressing that.
Okay. And then, so Supervisor Johnson, was your vote in favor of or against the motion?
Against the motion.
Right, against the motion. And Supervisor Linganfelter?
I am against the motion. I vote no.
Okay, oh, okay, well, that changes everything. So it's three to two against. Thank you. Okay. So because that was denied, we need a new motion? Supervisor Bishop?
Okay, I'll just make a motion to approve it. Recommend it.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Number 24. Discussion Possible Action: Approve the Following Exceptions to General Fund Hiring Freeze. That would be county attorneys, things with the courts, senior programs coordinator like HAVU Risk Management, emergency managing technician, and Superior Court Judicial Assistant.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Was that opposed or? Supervisor Linganfelter, are you in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Okay. So I believe it passed. I think there was, but I do believe that there was one against. I believe Supervisor, I'm not sure about what Supervisor Johnson voted.
It carried unanimously.
It carried unanimously. Okay, great. This is from Supervisor Bishop. Discussion Possible Action: Approve the Adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution Number 202422, expressing Mojave County support for WECOM's application for bead grant funding from the Arizona Commerce Authority. And we have one person signed up for this, and that would be Chris Rodardi.
Chris Rodardi, Mojave County taxpayer. I oppose item 25, 26, as much the same. Bead grant, broadband, equity access, and deployment. This is more DEI nonsense. It consistent with the UN Sustainable Development Goal Number Nine. We've been here before. I urge a no vote. I expect you will vote to approve. But unless you'd like me to read the text of the goal number nine from the United Nations website, that's all I've got.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else? Okay. It's a pleasure of the board.
Yes, I would like to just remind everybody that almost $1 billion in state bead funding has been used to expand fiber and broadband services in our rural communities that have gone unserved or underserved until now. As the past president of the County Supervisors Association and also the Arizona Commerce Authority, I continue to be supportive of our providers in securing bead grant funding. At the last Board of Supervisors meeting, we approved a resolution to support the efforts of MEC. And today, we have the opportunity to approve resolutions of support for both WECOM and ALO with the goal of providing high-speed internet access to every household and business in Mojave County. So this resolution in front of us today is in addition to a support letter that I wrote back in September of '22, and give a 10-point increase in consideration of bead grant in the bead grant application process. And that's huge, because we want to keep this money in Mojave County. WECOM has always provided great quality and reliable communication services to our remote communities, and we utilize them also for emergency communications equipment, services, residential and commercial internet, and fiber optics. And, you know, also with two-way radios and radio dispatch, and our over-the-air TV and public broadcasting. So WECOM has done a lot for Mojave County over the years. I personally commit to supporting WECOM and their projects wholeheartedly. District Four trusts them and their capabilities for growth, including the new Entrada community out in the White Hills area. So, Madam Chairwoman, at this time, I do hereby make the motion to approve this resolution expressing Mojave County support for WECOM's application in the bead grant application process.
Okay, we have a motion. So here, second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I guess motion carries unanimously. Number 26, which is a similar resolution, this time to support ALO Fiber's application for bead grant funding. Supervisor Linganfelter?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion opposed? Motion carries. Onto number 27. This is my item that I brought forth. It is another ARPA project, and I do want to make some comments about this. Usually, we go through them and we just approve them because each district was given sort of autonomy in what they wanted to do with their share of the allotment of ARPA money. But I want everyone to kind of understand what's going on and why I'm doing this, the things I'm doing within the recovery community. So I'm proud to announce the latest addition to the continuum of care for women in recovery in Mojave County. When I first moved to Mojave County in 2005, there was very little help for women who were in the throes of addiction, but who wanted help. I'm pleased to say that with very hard work and dedication by so many people, Mojave County is leading the way in drug and alcohol treatment and is seeing much success. I want to reiterate that the ongoing costs of these facilities are not shouldered by Mojave County taxpayers. But you know what Mojave County taxpayers do pay for? Incarceration. And you pay a lot. Helping people shed the chains of addiction is not only good for them, it is good for our community, and it's ultimately good for the taxpayer. So I had asked the two agencies that I had worked with to get this going to come here, but, believe it or not, both of them have the flu. They do. It's going around. So they both sent statements that they asked me to read. So several years, oh, actually, several years ago, West Care Arizona, with the help of many, opened a 16-bed residential treatment center for women and their babies. Many women come to residential treatment without their children, and the children are placed with family or in the foster care system due to the mother's poor behaviors. We work with these mothers and the Arizona Department of Child Safety alongside of CASA to help reunite the children with their mothers. In addition, we work with expecting and postpartum mothers. We have found and have established a wonderful and functioning continuum of care with our community partners. In doing so, we have also found we are missing a key component, a place for mothers to continue an outpatient treatment while living with their children after leaving residential treatment. This house is an opportunity to have children stay with their mothers, to be supported by other mothers in the same situation. It is like recovery housing, but with their children. The house will have a staff member on site to guide and help these families become successful, not only in long-term recovery, but also in being the best parent they can be. This is a much-needed house that will close the gap, or at least shorten it, in our community. Once again, this is not going to be run by any government agency. The next person I asked to speak is Beverly Siemens, and she is a CASA court-appointed special advocate. They are angels who walk this earth. And the board president of our foundation, CASA Council, Helping Children of Mojave County. As a CASA and directly working with the children, there is a need for this home that has been presented today. There are not enough foster homes and even kinship placements in Mojave County. Many times, these siblings are separated into different homes in other counties, sometimes in other states. Not only is it hard on the siblings, but also the mother. There are times when transportation is unavailable, and therefore, they do not get their visits. This home will allow the mother the opportunity to utilize outside services for her and her children while having a safe place to live. Having a home for the mother and children to reside in is such a great opportunity so she can rebuild their lives. CASA Council could assist these families with their children's unmet needs, which would also take some of the stress off the mother. Without homes like this, the mothers would not be able to meet the needs of their children and have the opportunity to become a productive person in the community. And that is by Beverly Siemens. We do have somebody signed up to speak. Mr. McClure? Come on down and yell at me.
I'm not against mothers and babies being together. Don't go there with me on that. I don't mind giving a hand up, not a hand out. This does help these mothers, and the court system is so screwed up on this separating mothers and their babies and sending them to other states and to people that might be in worse, I mean, I'm not going there with this. I got to stop there. Trouble is, on this backup that I got, there's, I can't find their tax returns since 2020, 2020. Why can I not get that? I want to know. Yes, it does have something to do with it.
Wait, 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 from who? From which? From West Care?
Yes, from West Care.
You know, I will request that for you. Anything you want, I will request.
Okay, I'm requesting their tax returns. For you guys to look at it, where is their money going? Has any money ever gone to your?
Never.
Okay.
I make zero money from West Care.
So, okay. Because we got some other 501Cs down there in Bullhead that are just a big farce. I'm going after you-know-who. And here's the National Association of State Charity Officials. They have rules and regulations on this, big time, and they're not giving me any information on the backup here. You guys don't have it. Because I couldn't get it either. I'm asking this to be put off until these people get over the flu and come here. And why is this not in Bullhead City? It's going to be around?
It is in Bullhead City.
Well, that doesn't say that. This is from the Mojave County Attorney's Office. Ryan and?
Well, that may have been my mistake by not providing enough information.
Getting around.
I will give you every piece of information you want. Just come by my office, and I will make sure all your questions are answered.
So this is going to accommodate more than one mother and baby?
It will accommodate. It's a five-bedroom home. The huge bedrooms, probably two to a room with their baby. So it's going to be between about 10 mothers and their children.
Are they going to be tested?
Of course they are.
Okay.
This is, I don't believe in, just like you were saying, a hand up and a hand out. This is the carrot and the stick. You get this, but there are things you have to do. You have to be accountable. That's the only way I support programs, if there's accountability.
Well, in my area down there at La-Z-Heary's, we've had problems before with these people opening up these homes and getting government money, and there's no accountability. I want the CEO here of West Care here.
There's a lot of accountability, and in fact, the governor has made treatment, facilities, and sober livings a priority in her budget. So we'll be seeing that. Okay, so with that, I make a motion to approve. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Number 28. Okay. Okay, I have a, and this is about moving the call to public to the end of the meeting. Okay, I have a statement. This agenda item is to move the call to public from the beginning of the meeting to the end of the meeting, the same way five other counties in Arizona arrange their meetings. A little history. In 2013, when Mojave County went from three to five supervisors, there was no call to public. And thank you, Becky Foster, for reminding me that at one time, there was a call to public. I don't know why it was taken away. But it was a campaign promise from several of the new board members, and it was one of the first things we did when we took office. For the most part, it has worked very well. In the last several years, some things have changed. Call to public is the time to speak about things not on our agenda. It's not even supposed to be about things that are outside the scope of this board, but I believe we all think that citizens can use their three minutes as they see fit. Things changed a bit with COVID, as you all know, and everyone knew that things were not as we were being told, and everybody wanted to speak their mind. And people were, and still are, angry. I get it. I'm angry. I believe it was 2021, correct me if I'm wrong, Supervisor Johnson asked that the call to public be moved to the end of the meeting, and we decided that it should stay in the beginning. We also went from citizens requesting the supervisors to take out consent agenda items to signing up to speak on them. That was not a thing until three years ago. Then last year, the process was changed again by asking speakers to talk about consent agenda items at the call to public. Although well-intentioned, personally, I did not think that worked well, as the board is not allowed to answer questions or talk or speak on consent agenda items. Yeah, right. We are seeing a lot of changes in Mojave County, and it's very important for people to have their input, and nobody wants to take that away. First and foremost, this is a business meeting. People come, sometimes from very long distances, to have their items heard. Our meetings have been going so long that people have had to leave. In addition, a supervisor has requested that we have lunch breaks, and I'm going to honor that request. I thought about this, and I am suggesting that the call to public go last at the end of the meeting. People can still sign People can still sign up to talk about consent agenda items, although I really prefer that you ask your supervisors, as it says that the consent agenda items are supposed to be. And then, we can talk about it, and we can answer questions, and you can also sign up for agenda items. That won't change either. The only thing that would change would be the time of the call to public. I received comments, both positive and negative, and no, I'm not suppressing your First Amendment rights. The comments are about convenience. So it comes down to this: Which constituents do we choose to inconvenience? I don't know the answer. I just wanted to bring this to the board for discussion. As all of you know, the only way we can discuss an issue is in public. So before I call up any of the people who signed up to speak, I want to hear from my colleagues on the board, as this may dictate how this all goes. So I'm opening it up to the board for their comments. Anyone? No comments?
Madam Chairman, I'd prefer to hear what the people have to say first.
Okay. How about you and Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Johnson?
I can't hear him.
Supervisor Johnson, we didn't hear your comment.
Oh, I had no comment. I've made my position known years ago on this. Thank you.
Supervisor Linganfelter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking forward to hearing what all the speakers say on this. However, I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to make the organization of our agendas more efficient by not only moving the call to the public to the end, but also moving the reporting section to the end as well. So perhaps the structure of the agendas would be, we come to motion, do invocation, the pledge, go right into consent, then the public hearings, then the regular agenda, then call to the public, then all the board reports. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Chairman Angus, I didn't understand the last thing on the agenda. I couldn't understand what the supervisor was saying.
There are reports that we do in the legislative reports. I believe he's talking about putting that at the end as well.
Okay. I just couldn't understand what he was saying.
That's incorrect.
That's incorrect?
No, that was accurate. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Scotty, come on down.
Chairman Angus, just for the record, I want to hear the public comment before I make a decision one way or the other.
So noted.
Scotty from Bullhead. I just can't believe you are taking away my rights to free speech. I'm sorry, Hildy, you're wrong.
As usual.
How in the heck can you guys vote on somebody, something, when you haven't heard our comments yet? You might find something interesting, or maybe you didn't know that. But you're making a decision without us having to stand up here. And it's just, you know, we got Walsh today. Lautowski was on last time. You can do this by Zoom, video camera, whatever. You can... We don't... I just can't believe you... All right, yeah, it was in... Bishop and Johnson voted against this last time. You three here voted...
No.
Well, that's what this is... And somebody gave me the wrong backup.
Backwards.
Well, Johnson and Bishop is three to two. I was here. I griped about it. In fact, I went to your office and had you put it on the agenda.
Yeah, that's right.
So here I am again. I don't think you guys have a right to do this, to move this stuff around. You'd be stepping on my rights to get up here and say, you know, I'm running for District Two Supervisor. You're not going to let me talk until later? When you guys have already voted on something? I don't get up here? I can't, I can't, I can't believe this. See, no comments available until after you've already voted on this.
Scotty, may I interrupt and clarify something? You will be able to comment on every item that we vote on. This is just the call to public that has things that are not on our agenda comes in at the end, but you'll still be able to talk about consent agenda, regular agenda. You can talk at public hearings. That will not change. The only thing that changes is the time from the call to public.
It should stay where it's at.
Okay. So noted.
And why didn't you let me comment on 60 and 61 last time on the consent agenda? I signed up for them, and you shot me down, Hildy.
I did.
And here you're taking away my free speech again.
Free speech. Okay.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay. Christopher Darty. Frequent flyer, highly scripted Mojave County taxpayer. I'm opposed to item 28. Boy, what an avalanche of social media anxiety over the weekend. For anyone who missed it, the Kingman Daily Miner and other local rags published a story about Hildy's proposal to move the call to the public to the end of the meeting rather than leaving it where it is. In the article, those of us who regularly compose and deliver our thoughts and ideas at the call to the public were described as "post-pandemic cadre of highly scripted frequent flyers," with meetings taking on a Jerry Springer-esque vibe as a result. Moving the call to the end of the meeting will inconvenience those citizens who take time from their day in life to participate in the legislative process. Having to sign up before 9:30 and then wait until mid-afternoon in many cases amounts to First Amendment free speech suppression. As one of those frequent speakers, I can tell you, I spend many hours researching and composing my presentations, which must be condensed into three minutes, thus the scripting. And it takes more than a little moxie to get up here in front of this audience and speak. In many cases, I am compelled to alert others to the unconstitutional decisions being enacted in our county with little, if any, chance of changing the minds of those public servants we have entrusted to act on our behalf. But then again, you don't have to allow us our First Amendment right to freely speak at this call. Of that, we were sternly reminded in the Angus article, in which she stated, quote, "Long-running call-to-public meeting segments are an inefficient use of time and resources." So should I just shut up and shuffle back to my seat now like a good little serf? After all, I wouldn't want to disrupt the business of the county. Oh, wait. This is the business of the county. Our right to speak is the business of we, the people, a distinction you are no doubt sick of hearing. If any of you on this panel are listening and truly hearing us, particularly anyone running for reelection or higher office, I urge you, take up the cause of your fellow citizens today and vote no on 28. Armin Steng?
I'm in Stengaford, Mojave. Why fix up what is not broken? Why you want it on the end? On the end, everybody is tired. Most of the people have to leave already before the meetings are over. They have animals to feed, houses to take care of, doctor appointments. If you have a meeting that goes till 3 o'clock, how are they going to speak up with their problems? You know, you know me. I speak out. I don't care if I have to sit here till 4 o'clock. You get to know what I want. So please leave it at the point so other people have the chance to talk to. Thank you.
Mark Shaver, and then Karen DeShazer. Did somebody say something? Supervisor Johnson?
No, this is Supervisor Ling...
Oh, Lingfelter.
May I make a comment really quick before we continue with public comment?
Absolutely.
I just want to say, we just heard from a speaker that talked about doctors' appointments and getting homes to their families and being respectful to your fellow man. And I would just say to all of you that live in Kingman, or half an hour, 35 minutes away in Bullhead, or even an hour away in Havasu, when in District One, I have people that come down from Beaver Dam and Littlefield and Scenic and Centennial Park in Colorado City, and it takes them four hours to come down, and we have public comment that goes until 11:30. They're not getting home until nighttime. So it's a full day for them. And they came down for business. And I think that that's important to get on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mark?
It's good seeing you, Mark. Okay, Karen? And then Chuck? Wife goes first, always, right?
Karen DeShazer, Topock, Arizona. Madam Chairperson and your fellow supervisors, I wholeheartedly agree with all of the comments opposing this motion and this agenda item today. And borrowing a sentiment from a movie, the call to the public, in my opinion, is like a box of chocolates. You never know what you're going to get. In my opinion, the call to the public is the best part of the Board of Supervisors meetings. I learned so much today about that power plant I would have never known about because I didn't concern myself with it. But now I know. I love the fact that we can come up as citizens of this county and talk about anything that concerns us and concerns our fellow citizens, and we're not told to shut up, go sit down. And if by chance, we went to one of your offices and talked to you about it beforehand, perhaps we weren't able to get in touch with you then. Perhaps you were out to lunch. Perhaps we were told that we had to make an appointment, and it just wasn't convenient. But if we can come to these meetings, stand out in front, and state something that we believe is important to us, I believe that's a wonderful thing, and I believe it should stay at the beginning of the meeting. One thing I would like to suggest is that, as has been said, some people are not retired. They have jobs. They can't get off for more than an hour, and perhaps they're going to use their lunch hour to come down here at 9:30 or 10:30 in the morning and speak. If they don't know when they would have to be here in the afternoon or at the end of the meeting, I believe that would be hard for them. So I suggest that perhaps these meetings are sometimes held at other hours, perhaps after an eight-to-five time period, when working people might be able to attend. Also, I'd like to suggest that perhaps the location of these meetings rotate from the Kingman area to Bullhead, Kingman, and Bullhead City, since they all have the facilities to house these meetings. And you might, after a time, after people got used to it, after they were informed, more people might be able to attend the meetings.
Thank you. Chuck? And then Kenny Works? Then Stephen Robinson?
Chuck DeShazer, Topock, Arizona. I wholeheartedly agree with everything my wife had to say, which, you know why. And basically, it comes down to, you know, I find it really amazing that you think the work of the county is listening to people like Scott Holtry coming up with how many chickens you can have and roosters not allowed, or peacocks, and you think that's more important than listening to people that are going to have to live with a power plant for 20 or 30 years, or until they die of cancer or whatever it takes. So I would like to say it's just as important to listen at the beginning of the meeting when one of our supervisors tends to not show up unless he's placed in charge. For about 90% of the meetings, he seems to be on a computer or phone somewhere away from here, so he could just turn off the call to the public and never get any of that in. You know, it's just something that I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenny Works? And then Steve Robinson? And then Don Martin? Is Don Martin still here? Kenny? Is he still here? Kenny? He left? Okay. Steve?
Steve Robinson, Golden Valley. I came to this meeting and I marked opposed because of reasons that's been mentioned. I then switched a couple, about 15 minutes ago, to supporting it because of your promise that you would allow people to speak to the consent agenda items before the vote, because that made sense. Having heard what Supervisor Linganfelter, I switched back to opposing it for that reason, except for, I'm going to recommend that you follow the guidelines that says, when you have a group all in red, you specifically state, one person speaks for the whole group, and don't let 20, 30, 40, 50 people speak, because that, they're all saying the same thing. And if they're going to keep coming to this meeting to do that and take up everybody else's valuable time because of their single issue, and the fact that they left before the rest of the meeting, I think they should speak at the end of the... Or just allow one person. I want to cover a little bit of history. In 2013, when you wisely supported and voted for adding the call to the public, Supervisor Johnson was in error, as Becky Foster and I had found out during my own research, that they did have a call to the public years ago. Supervisor Johnson said, "Well, this is the county's business. This is a business meeting," he said in that, because I listened to it last night. "No, this is not a business meeting. This is a meeting of the people's representatives, making decisions on behalf of the people. We elected you to do our business for us. You are our representatives. Therefore, it's all the more important to have the call to the public and have other people speak, which is good." But the fact that he said it's a business meeting, no, it's not a business meeting. It is a meeting of the people's elected representatives, and therefore, we have a right to criticize your decisions, a right to challenge you. And I'm going to remind you, Ms. Angus, I heard that you had complained about the previous supervisor back on August, when we had two sides to the issue about Gene Bishop wanting to, or Gene Kench, let me get that right, wanting to kick people out of the PCs. And it was recommended, I heard from you, that you said there should have only been one person from each side elected to, or nominated to support. Well, that's what you should do with the group in red, is give them one person, and that's it. And you can still do the call to the public at the beginning. Thank you.
Okay. So Don isn't here, Stanley Hicks here? There he is. And then Tanya? Tanya, after that? And then James Jones, after that?
Thank you, Madam Chair and the members of the board. I am Stanley W. Hicks, Mojave County taxpayer and voting citizen. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed changes to the rules of order by moving the call to the public to the end of the regular session instead of keeping it where it currently resides. This motion seems to many citizens of Mojave County to be designated to discourage the vocal citizens, not the cadre of citizens, as written, to leave the meeting before the final minutes allotted to them to speak. While this is not an assault on anybody's First Amendment right, which is ludicrous to mention at all because Congress isn't involved in this, it does have the earmarks of an action designed to discourage, disenfranchise, and dismiss those who wish to take a vocal part of this democratic process by speaking to their representatives. And let's be perfectly clear: Our supervisors are elected representatives of the voters and the citizens of the county, and not necessarily leaders who should dictate to the people when, where, and for how long they can speak. The rules are already heavily in favor of the supervisors and not the people. I'll make this short. I urge my district's representative, Travis Linganfelter, and all the supervisors elected to serve the people, to keep the rule of order as they are, and not mess with something that is not broken but working. It may be a bit of a problem to some supervisors, but they are not volunteering their time. They are getting a very decent salary... a very decent salary and there are many people willing to do the job and listen to the voice of the people if our current supervisors are unhappy with the time they spend listening to the people. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Tanya Dawson, Mojave County taxpayer. When Hildy Angus said one of the reasons to move the call to the public to the end of the meeting was because long-running call to the public meeting segments are inefficient use of time, she seemingly made it clear that the purpose of moving those comments to the end of the meeting was to discourage people from speaking, thereby shortening the meeting for the convenience of the board. And now we actually see many people have left because they were not able to stay and speak their comments. So Supervisor Bishop is my elected representative. Supervisor, this is your chance to show those people who are against big government that some people in elected positions do still represent the people. By voting to keep the call to the public where it is, you are showing the people that you value their input and their voice over regular mundane business. I would encourage you and all other supervisors to vote to keep the call to the public where it is. Thank you.
Okay, James Jones? And then Sean Meisner? And then Jeff Esposito?
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is James of the family of Jones, sovereign of Kingman, Arizona. On rule, this is number 28, what we're speaking about moving the rules.
The call to the public.
Representative Angus, I say no to this resolution. The American people are the most important asset of the government. And what they have to say is the most important thing that the government should listen to. By bringing this resolution to the floor, you have proven you are not America first. And you do not care about the people of Mojave County and their opinions. So let's talk about sovereignty. Even though King George gave the people his sovereignty, that sovereignty is being ignored today in this government. This is important because our original system of government is based upon the people being sovereign, or King George. Kings are the only ones that can make law. And the kings are the sovereigns and the people are the sovereigns. Kings make the law. We, the people, the kings, and you, Board of Supervisors, are the public servants. So keeping that in mind, yes, it's inconvenience at a lot of times, but as sovereigns, we need to speak. As has already been brought about, a lot of things that people think of, I don't think about. So I'm sure that the board doesn't think about it as well. So with that, I'd like to leave you with, think about sovereignty. Think about the position that not only you are in, but we're in. And think about the system. I really think this system needs an overhaul from the ground up, starting at the city, the county, through on. That's my personal opinion. I have an America-first national thought and world outlook. And it's a whole lot different than what a lot of people are thinking about. Sometimes I'm taken wrong, but I want you to think about sovereignty. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. Sean Meisner, candidate District One Supervisor. I'm undercover today. Just kidding. Thank you, Ron Gould, for stepping up for the people of Sunrise Hills in Fort Mojave. I stand behind you 100%. It doesn't matter where our district lines end and where they start. The people come first. Today is a clear example of why the call to the public should be at the beginning of every meeting. We had, that whole side was full. Can you imagine how irritated people would be by the end of the meeting? Is this to discourage citizens not to speak? That's the question. Why would it be moved if not for that reason? I'm opposed to moving the call to the public to the end of the meeting. Please show respect to the citizens of Mojave County, the hardworking people of our county taking time out of their day to address local issues. Great ideas come from the local citizens and they deserve to be heard first. The people always come first. Remember who votes for you and they come first. You work for us. Thank you.
Mr. Meisner? Mr. Meisner? So the people, and I'm not trying to be adversarial, I'm not, but there seems to be a disconnect. Because the people who come here for business, they're also, we work for them as well. So again, it's just about who gets inconvenienced. That's really what it comes down to, sort of. So that's why we're here. I just want to say it seems to be like us, we work, you work for us, but we also work for the people who come before us. That's all.
Right. And the people should never be inconvenienced.
All of them.
Madam Chair?
Well, the citizens come first before the businesses, period.
Well, they're citizens. The people who come, yes, Supervisor Lingan Felter.
I'd like to ask the speaker a question. Since he announced he's running for District One Supervisor, what would his answer in response be on this issue for folks that come down from Colorado City and Centennial Park and Beaver Dam and Littlefield that have to take a whole day off to come down and hear a planning and zoning issue that they have? Or in Cane Beds, Arizona? It's very easy for someone in Kingman to make a meeting. They have maybe a 20-minute drive. But what would you say to the constituents on the other side of the Grand Canyon that have to make a whole day, childcare, all those things, just to come here one meeting, issue? And when we don't get to the business items until 11:30, that presents a problem for constituents in Mojave County that live on the other side of the Grand Canyon. It takes them four hours to get here. So I would ask what your response would be to them?
Okay. If it was at the end of the meeting, they would have to waste their whole day. Their whole day would be over with their, with their drive and everything. If they leave at, say, 5 o'clock in the morning, they get here by the meeting, yeah, it happens. I have to drive up there. You have to drive up there, Travis. We know we have a huge district. And that's what happens. I have to drive down to Lake Havasu for PC meetings. I'm not complaining. People come first, always, no matter what.
Oh, my God, Travis. How pitiful. I challenge, I challenge you on 11:30, by the way. And Don Martin, the candidate for jeans, had to leave? I mean, good Lord. The most people that come to talk to this house, the people's house, Hildy, are the ones that come to call to public. Okay? I have seen the transition from all five of you. Of course, ChatGPT Johnson, you know, the AI guy, wherever he is. The best one was Ron when he took down ChatGPT Johnson's wall, COVID wall. You have now set a precedent on who you are running for a Senate, how you care about most human beings. You're all about business. This is Meshuggah.
Meshuggah.
Meshuggah. Okay, good.
Don't say Yiddish to a Jewish person.
Today's total time in the call to public was with the whole, the red mob here was just a little over an hour. I mean, for God's sake, keep it real. The only other thing that I wrote down here was, nope, that's it.
Thank you. Jennifer Esposito, candidate for District Four, county supervisor and totally not responsible for my husband, who has his own thoughts and his own ideas. And I respect his right to say his piece always. Now, my objection with this is, goes back years to when I was illegally drug out of a court site, town council meeting, for speaking at call to the public. And back then, it was moved to the end of the meeting. It was done so, and these were evening meetings, I think 7:00 PM. But it was done because they thought that old retired people couldn't stay up till 10 or 11 o'clock to get their two or three minutes in. And boy, were they wrong. But the intent was essentially to chill the expression because it's not always easy, especially during a daytime meeting, for someone to sit here when we don't know if the meeting will be three, four, five, six, seven hours sometimes, 90-something items on the agenda. You put it last. No one can plan their day. The problem is, if someone has business before the board, they have the right to speak to that business. They don't have to be here by 9:30 to sign up if that's actually business. If it's, for instance, a rezone or an abatement and they have a right to speak. We have to, as call to the public, get up early, drive from Beaver Dam, Littlefield, White Hills, even Donkey Acres, Mojave Valley. There are places that have very long driving distances. And so for all of the supervisors in this very large district who have constituents who don't live five minutes away, it's really sort of insulting to say, you have to be here before 9:30 and sign in and then sit in wait. Whereas, you know, the business of the county, sure, this is a business meeting, but the business of the county is the business of the people. And so my problem with this is, if you wanted to put it at the end, and I don't think you should, then you need to repeal that convoluted thing you passed earlier where, okay, you can only speak to consent or in call to the public, but now you'll have to ask it to be pulled. But, and that's not on the agenda today. So if nothing else, because you are not agendized, to remove that prior constraint, I urge you to either postpone this or vote this down because it creates chaos for the ladies who take our slips up at the, you know, table and whatnot. You know, if I'm supervisor, I think that, you know, if you have someone who comes from a very long ways away to do business, the chair controls the agenda. And as Travis Lingan Felter knows perfectly well, you can pull that agenda item to the front and let those people go home. It's been done over and over again. Accommodations have been made for the sheriff and other people. Oh, and this presentation that wasn't agendized until way late in the meeting, we're going to hold up call to the public and let that speaker speak first and go home. The chair controls the agenda. You can make it run smoothly. Mr. Elters does not control the agenda. Supervisor Angus, you do.
Thank you. You know, thank you, Jennifer. That brought up, so how I saw this is, people can come any time. They don't have to come at 9:30 to sign up. They can come anytime, 11, and sign up. With, I'm just, we get to discuss this, people. We're just discussing, okay? Yes, we are. Can, can that be done?
Chairman Angus, in the past, some supervisors who are the chairman have requested sign up only till 9:30.
Right.
Some chairman have allowed sign up prior to any item beginning.
Right.
So it's kind of depends on what the chairman directs us to do. We don't make that call. It's whoever the chairman is at the time.
Okay. Thank you. Michelle Reichenbach? Michelle? And then Christine Dumas? And then last but not least, Mark Shaver?
Chairman Angus, I'm Michelle Reichenbach. I'm in Lake Havasu. Chairman Angus, board members, you were hired by the residents of Mojave County to represent us. The people of Mojave County are your boss, not the other way around, whether you like it or not. The mere fact that you would consider even for a second putting the concerns of your boss on the back burner and moving it to the end of the meeting would, in hopes that it would be discouraging for us to give you our valid opinion, is more than telling of your integrity and character. Listening to your constituents should be your first priority. Their concerns about the county they live in are valid and should be valued by you. Your comment about the residents being like a Jerry Springer show are uncalled for and this shows the disdain about who you, who hired you. There will be pushback on this issue and other issues. If you don't, we don't agree with you suppressing our First Amendment right to address you with our concerns. And then that's exactly what it does by putting it at the end of the meeting, just as other people have said. If, if the time for other people from long distance away is a concern, then have the, have an hour for the, an hour or so for the call to the meeting and, and have a break. And then do your business meeting after that for people that have to come a long distance away, specifically coming for those items, so that they don't have to get up at 4 o'clock in the morning to come down here and listen to call to the speakers if that's not what they're looking for. We're forming a committee and we're going to be watching you. It's, we meet at the Havasu Library and we're working with Tactical Civics, taking our country back one county at a time. To the rest of the board meters, Board of Supervisors, I urge you to vote no on moving the call to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to clarify something. I never use the term Jerry Springer. That was the writer of the article, not me. Okay. Christina Dumas? And then Mark?
Chair, supervisors, staff. I'm Dr. Christina Dumas from Bullhead City. And after this item came on the agenda, I received a tape. And it was a tape of you, Madam Chair, that said, this is when you were initially running. It was way back when.
Right.
So you said your constituents, you wanted to take care of your constituents over the county employees. So I want to bring that up to you, okay? Remember that, please. Everyone here has talked today and they've all said they oppose this. Okay? I mean, we all had to take our time and I'm not saying, you know, that, that's not, not necessary. But people took the time to come down here to let you know their thoughts because you represent us. Okay? And putting that at the beginning of the meeting sets the tone as you guys listening to what's going on in the county. You can't be all over. And we've got a big county. So it sets the tone. Sitting at the end of the meeting is really poor optics. And I wish you all would consider what has been said today. I know you will. But really seriously think about, no one was for this, except for maybe a couple up there. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I've never thought about ever crossing party lines, but what I heard today, that was really good. They pretty much said everything that I was thinking. And this is coming from a conservative group of people here telling you that this is a bad idea. I was back here in 2013 when we pushed to have this brought and put on the agenda at the beginning of the meetings. And I like to see it kept right where it's at. I run a small business and I had to take a business day off just so I could speak and address this. So, you know, to the folks up there in Colorado City coming down here, I feel you. You know, I should be out there, you know, making money, paying my taxes to pay your salaries. That's what I should be doing. But instead, I'm here because this is important. It's been important. It's why it's here. That's why it should be there. But at the same time, what I heard today, yeah, I can get where you want to put it in the back, but it's, it's a slight towards the people that do come here. So I'll have to put it on the back burner. It's not cool. And, yeah, I think that's pretty much all I want to say because everybody is pretty much has said it. I'm just here to show a pretty face.
Thanks, Mark. It's always good to see you. All right, that's all I have signed up. Okay. I heard some really good things here. That was the purpose. We have to discuss things in public. So, but I did hear something from Mr. Robinson that I want to ask our county attorney. So let's So let's say there is an issue where we pick 20, 30 people sign up. Can we have the ability, do I, as the chairman, do I have the ability to say, you know, pick, you know, one or two speakers and they can speak for 10 minutes? Or something like that?
Chairman Angus, that's a very good question. I believe you can on regular agenda items. The regular agenda items are controlled here by the board and so on. I do not believe you could apply that to call to the public, though. If somebody signs up and says, hey, you know, let me back up just a little bit, kind of play, lay out the legal groundwork here. This meeting is a limited public forum. Constitutional law that the Supreme Court has ruled on in many times and many different things, many different contexts, they divide forums into different types of forums. If you're, for example, in a public park, that's a very public forum. If you're in a private meeting that is not designated for the public, that's something completely different. This meeting here is a limited public forum where the constitutional rights and the standards that apply are different than in a public forum, like in a park. What that means is that there is no constitutional right to call to the public. The statute that the legislature has created said that the board may do that, okay? So they say "may." So that means that the board can decide whether to have call to the public or not. If the board wishes to do that, then the board says, okay, we'll have a call to the public. Well, once that is given, then you're looking, okay, this is a statutory, statutory framework. And there's nothing in the statute that says, you know, you can limit it here, that, and that or the other. So I don't see that you could do that. Because you've, if you've said, okay, I'm going to give this option that the legislature has given us, then you've got to give it to the public, and the public has a right to speak on it. And so I don't see how you can limit and say, we're going to limit it to one group or whatever. If they want to agree to that, then they can. They can do that on their own. But to just say, nope, we're going to limit it to only one of the 50 that are there on call to the public, I don't think you could do that. I don't see that happening. That, so, but to the regular agenda items, you could do that, because you dictate and you determine that. On the other items where it's public hearings, I also don't think you could do that either, because it's a public right to be able to, to be able to speak to that, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And Ms. Esposito made a good point, because we did not agendize some of the other things I suggested, like going back to just asking your supervisor to take the consent agendas off. So it is kind of an unfinished process. I wanted to talk about it. I wanted to hear everybody's insight. So I'm going to ask the board if we could take no action, and if I could come up, or if anyone has ideas of any compromise, that we will bring that back in the future. Excuse me, putting on the ballot, yeah. Okay. So that's what I want to do. Do I have to make that into a motion?
Just take no action.
Okay, so we're going to take no action on this today?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Since we're not going to take any action, I just want to comment that I did not support moving call to the public to the end of the meeting. A lot of times, I get berated as much as anybody else, and that's just part of the job. And I prefer to eat my spinach first, rather than let that go to the end of the meeting. And it's, it's, the whole thing's just a dirty business, and it deals with people, and this is just how it is. And I don't think that just to push off one group over another group is even going to accomplish anything. So we just need to, I prefer that we just proceed as we have been doing. But I think that we need to clarify the issue with agenda items, the consent agenda and the call to the public. I think we've got that kind of problematic, and I think we need to get away from that. But anybody, if you want an item pulled off the consent agenda, send me an email, I'll pull the item off, whatever it is. I don't care. But I think that's created some confusion, just so we need, do need to work on that.
That's, that's a great point. Thank you very much. Okay, so we took no action on that. The last item I brought, Chairman Angus. Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't, I'm always looking this way.
There's more to look at, that direction. But I just wanted to mention that I got a lot of information from the comments from the public, too. But one thing that really hit home with me was from Karen DeSager, and her comment about the call to the public was, quote, "the best part of the Board of Supervisors meeting." So is this entertainment, or is this information for the supervisors to digest? So that's just one of the reasons that I think the call to the public has even been considered to be moved to the back, is that there are a number of people that come all the time that do this for entertainment. I mean, we know they do it for entertainment. They read articles to us. They quote, they quote.
Okay, all right. Excuse me.
Anyway, before that comment was made, I was totally against moving it. Now, I'm not too sure, because that hit home with me. Thank you.
Okay. Again, we'll be, I'll be bringing back something about to fix our consent agenda issue at the next board meeting. I want to thank everybody. Everybody was, you know, polite, for the most part, or Scotty.
Tell my comment.
And I heard things, and thank you, Steve and Jennifer. I heard things that I needed to hear. Okay. Next is another one of my issues. So on January 8th, 2024, the Arizona House of Representatives passed House Concurrent Resolution 2009, expressing support of the nation of Israel and its efforts to defend itself and its citizens from terrorism. And I had asked the clerk to print about 20 copies of that original resolution, and I believe it's on the back table, if anybody wants to grab it. Our resolution is in favor of the House. We support the House resolution. And I'll just read it really fast. "A resolution of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors expressing support of Arizona House of Representatives' Concurrent Resolution 2009, supporting the nation of Israel in its effort to defend itself and its citizens from terrorism. Whereas, the Board of Supervisors of Mojave County met in general session this 16th day of January 2024, and whereas, on January 8th, 2024, the Arizona House of Representatives passed House Concurrent Resolution 2009, expressing support of the nation of Israel and its efforts to defend itself and its citizens from terrorism. And whereas, in Concurrent Resolution 2009, the Arizona House of Representatives resolved, among other things, to recognize Israel's right to act decisively and unilaterally in self-defense to protect its citizens and to convey their most heartfelt condolences to all Israeli victims, as well as their families and communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mojave County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses its support of House Concurrent Resolution 2009, a copy of which is attached and incorporated into this resolution. The legislature passed this unanimously on opening day." So we do have some people signed up, and they're all opposed. So I'm waiting to, I would like to know what that's about.
Supervisors, for the record, my name's Greg Beffert. And I told you a long time ago that communism was the problem. That's the reason, and it's here, and it's taken its shape in the modern form of political and religious Zionism. And for those of you that are ignorant of Zionism, don't know the difference between political Zionism, don't know the difference between Judaism, Hasidic or Sephardic Jews, or Ashkenazi. This isn't about, you know, the Jewish or Israeli people against Hamas. And I'm not for the violence of Hamas. But you're being lied to. You're being lied to. Here, this conflict isn't anything like, just like everything else that you're being lied to about. Israel's a Zionist apartheid state. This has nothing to do, and I'm not, again, I'm not religious. I have a lot of friends that are Messianic Jews, Orthodox Jews. And you need to know the difference. And you need to know the political and the religious Zionists that currently run the Biden administration. There's 400 and something of them calling the shots in Washington, DC. You might think that's funny. I don't. A small percentage of the population controls the cabinet of the United States. Dual citizen Israelis that have a say in what happens here in this country. And you want to pass a resolution about protecting that state? You know nothing about the USS Liberty or Jonathan Pollard? You know nothing about the harm that the Israeli government has done to the United States? Again, this isn't, and go ahead and pull out your, oh, he's an anti-Semite trope. Go ahead and do that. You know what you can do with it. It has nothing to do with being anti-Semitic. You don't even know, most people don't even know the meaning of the term. But they'll use that to try to shut down dissent, just like Holocaust denial, just like conspiracy theorists. They use to shut down dissent. We have enough problems in this country, in this county, right now. I've sent Supervisor Gould a resolution. You have it in your hand. I drafted the deals with the COVID vaccinations. You took your flag halfway up the hill again by not supporting the funding of that. You haven't removed the harm, no. You haven't removed the harm. There's still harm that needs to be done, that needs to be taken care of. So what are you going to do about that resolution? And now what we're doing is, Israel's first. If you listen to these neocons and the Zionists in Washington, Israel first, Israel first, Ukraine. We're sending billions and billions of dollars overseas to defend their borders. What about ours in this country? So my recommendation to you is that you can, you can, this resolution, and focus your efforts here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beffert. As a Jew, I now know that you are my mortal enemy. And like the Palestinian protesters that were there on opening day, I consider you an enemy.
May I respond?
No. Next up is James Jones. Oh, okay.
I'm an enemy because.
You're representative of this county. Shame on you. Representative Angus, I say no to this resolution. It's a very, very, very hot subject, okay? You've brought your religion into this, this committee. And that's, that's wrong. That's absolutely wrong. I don't care what the state did. I didn't get a chance to speak up there, okay? What good would it do for Mojave County for us to pass this? We have to stop and think about that. Without being prejudiced on any side, let's look at it logically, okay? America's a Christian country. I can prove it to you in the law. So if we want to get into this big debate, and I don't like debate, I go with facts. I'm America first. This is not America first resolution. What this is, is globalism. It's changing our national thought. It's interventionism, and it's divisive. It's bringing divisiveness to the people, as you just, you just, you just brought in divisiveness. I saw, I saw it. Now you're bringing in hate. This is wrong. We need to get along. We need to have unity in this country, and that's what America first is all about, unity, okay? My ex-wife was Jewish, so don't call me those names, okay? I'm not prejudiced to the point that I hate. I'm America first. Let's bring unity to this country. The county has no place of getting involved in international issues. This is an international issue. It's globalism. You were voted into office to represent the people of this county only. In fact, we give illegally to Israel money that comes out to approximately $38,000 per person. That's how much we support Israel. Where's my $38,000? Nobody helped me. We're helping Ukraine, billions and billions of dollars. Where's, where's, I got $600. Isn't that nice? Now, that's a little bit prejudiced against the American people. That's not America first. The mindset is what I'm trying to get across here today when I spoke about sovereignty. The mindset of sovereignty and who we are, and as a people, and as of a country, sovereignty is very, very important to understand. And globalism doesn't fit into America first. Interventionism doesn't fit into America first. Don't be offended because people disagree with you. Don't hate. Hate hurts you. And I don't, I don't hate. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I've been soundly criticized on social media for people who have misunderstood me on this issue. I want to see peace in the Middle East. I stand for peace. I do not, I am not choosing a side in this particular issue. I read the resolution passed by the House, and I disagree with it for the following reasons. I do not send people to the Arizona Legislature to spend their time to make resolutions for foreign entities, no matter who that entity is. I really don't care which particular conflict it is, any more than I want to see the flag of Ukraine hung in our US Capitol. I don't think that that is the purpose of government at the state level. And I was very disappointed that they decided to do that. I understand why it was unanimous. This is an election year. Everybody likes to, you know, virtue signal things. As you well know, the country of Israel has mandatory service. I do not wish to see young men and women 18 years old thrown into a meat grinder in a conflict that is escalating in the Middle East. We've spent $260 billion since World War II, I think it is, giving aid and funding to Israel. And that's, that's fine. That's what our elected representatives chose to do. But this conflict is being funded by our tax money. And so, when I see, you know, bombs going back and forth on both sides, on all sides, I mean no disrespect, okay, to the Ashkenazi, the Misha'im, the Sephardim, the non-Talmudic Jews from Ethiopia who immigrated to Israel. I mean no disrespect at all. There are Palestinian Arabs. There are Christians in Palestine. It's a very complex issue. It is not one that we should be dealing with at the state level or at the county level. I just think it's the wrong thing to do. We pass a lot of meaningless resolutions here. I get that. You know, oh, constitutional county, Second Amendment sanctuary. We say a lot of things that really have no, no meaning. I respect everybody's right to make their own decisions on where they personally stand on this issue and every conflict the United States has been in. But I believe that it is a responsibility of this board to protect the taxpayers of Mojave County from the blowback of our interventionist foreign policy, regardless of where it is. It doesn't really matter to me where, what country. I just think that by, if, if the five of you, by consensus, vote to support this, that you're sort of setting an odd precedent. And it kind of, even though it's not specifically stated, it does sort of ride the line of church and state. But, but that, which, how many other foreign nations? I mean, I don't like it when people say my country, right or wrong. And I don't know if I want to say someone else's country, right or wrong. And there's no end cap on where the support ends or what actions might terminate it. Thank you.
My boss is a Jewish carpenter. My faith goes 50-plus years since I was 11 years old. I have studied the history of Israel, both from the Bible and from modern history books. And I'm sad that my friends, Jennifer Jones and James Jones and Greg, well, that's understandable. But this is a symbolic thing that you should be supporting, because we're talking about people that were murdered and assassinated, raped, burned to death, little babies. And this is not about Zionism. It is not about the evil bankers or whatever they're trying to claim. That's not the point. The point is, a nation that God established 4,500 years ago is this nation. And we have every right, especially as Christians, I'm an evangelical Christian. The evangelical Christians are the strongest supporters of Israel. It's the liberal churches that side with Hamas. And the word Hamas is Greek, is Hebrew for violence. So I am so totally supportive of this amendment. Thank you for bringing it up, Supervisor Chairman Angus, because I think we have an obligation to separate the politics or principle to supporting something that is really genuine. I am obviously rather passionate about it, and I didn't even plan to speak about it. But I think we need to support this. But I think we need to support this because it's the right thing to do. And it doesn't mean we're Zionist. It doesn't mean that we hate Christians, just the opposite. It means that we're people that are compassionate. We care. I have, I got a minute, so I'll use it. I had a friend that is from Winnipeg, Mont, Manitoba, Winnipeg, Canada. He's a Christian. He asks questions on a Facebook page that I took to mean opposite of what he did. He was just asking Chris, questions. But we became close friends, having the same attitude, wanting no violence, but wanting to stop it. We didn't stop going in after Hitler in 1945. We went after Hitler to destroy the evil. And there are people that may believe, that may be Holocaust deniers even in this room. Well, I've done my homework. I've done my research. I know what happened there and I, I died, burned well, don't want it ever to happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the board want to make a comment? Okay. And with that, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt Mojave County Resolution Number 2024 dash 025, expressing the Board of Supervisors' support of Arizona House of Representatives' Concurrent Resolution 2009, supporting the nation of Israel in its efforts to defend itself and its citizens from terrorism.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do we? You're doing nay? Okay.
I don't think we should be involved in, in state or national politics for a county board.
Okay. How about Supervisor Johnson? Did we get a vote?
I voted yes.
Okay. The motion carries four to one. Four to one. Okay, thank you. All right, there's nothing more?